Good morning, it's nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll call Jerry if you'd notice that all Planning Commissioners are present and Deb Hattcock is representing the County Commissioners today as part of the Planning Commission. With that, approval of the main minutes, and for the audience, if you haven't and want to look at Agenda, the agendas are in the back. And I would, we had, at our last meeting, we had a little bit of confusion on the consent calendar and just a reminder to everyone that on the consent calendar unless it's pulled, it gets acted on the entire consent calendar. So if you have an item that's on the consent calendar, make sure you speak up at that time. And anyway, so we avoid confusion, I'll kind of, when we get to that, I'll remind you again. Anyway, approval of the May 8th minutes. Did anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, entertain a motion for approval as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Anyone have any additions or changes to agenda at this time? Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval, agenda is presented.
So moved, second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? Do we need to make a motion to change item, the items that we got additional materials for? Like for example, item 24? We don't need a motion for that?
I don't believe so.
Because it's different than what's here? I just, I'm just curious.
No, it's in the, it's on the website.
Okay.
And you've already been emailed it.
Okay.
And it's in the original, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not any different than was emailed out before, but, and the agendas and the act of them reflect that.
Right, they're corrected.
The changes, okay.
Right, and it's posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good question. Especially with the longer lead time, we're getting more information afterwards.
Yeah, that's why I ask.
Did we, we didn't vote yet, did we?
No, that was, that was our discussion.
Anyway, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, approved on the agenda. Consent calendar. And again, these are the items that'll be read if you, if no one else pulls it and you want those items discussed, now is the time to do that. And we, the following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken in all items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings is Planning Commission are recommendations of Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. And I always note that on conditional use permits, action here is final unless it's appealed to the board. Then the board takes the final action. PJ, if you would read items three through, what is it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen for the, proposed for the consent calendar?
Sure. Good morning Commissioners, PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item number three in consent calendar, conditional use permit review 1309 for Beverly Sears to review an accessory structure prior to a principal structure in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of CUP 1309 to the June 26, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item four, conditional use permit review 1511 for Neil Terry Faust to review the use of an existing residence as a temporary residence while building a new single-family residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of CU 1511 to the June 12, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item five, conditional use permit review 1637 for Wade and Sherri Gresseth to review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1637 with 12 conditions. Item six, construction permit review 9821 for Dakota Stone Company to review the continued use of and expand the Crook Creek Quarry. To, staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 9821 with four conditions. Item seven, construction permit review 1603 for West River Electric Association to review the grading, the grading of a site for construction of a new electrical substation. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1603 with the applicant's concurrence. Item eight, conditional use permit amendment 1037 for Colin and Michelle Spurley to amend an existing conditional use to allow an existing caboose located on the subject property to be used as a seasonal cabin in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit amendment 1037 with 10 conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit 1710 for Maurice and Sanja Crowley. Vacation Rentals LLC is the agent to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1710 to the June 12, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 10, conditional use permit 1711 for Gerard and Michelle Linner, excuse me if I don't say that right, for Vacation Home Rentals LLC as the agent to allow vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1711 with 14 conditions. Item 11, conditional use permit 1714 for David and Laura Jones to allow recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1714 with 10 conditions. Item 12, conditional use permit 1715 for Jane Luanne Van Hunek to allow for bed and breakfast in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1715 with 19 conditions. Item 13, conditional use permit 1716 for Schoolhouse LLC Larry Tuber to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1716 with 16 conditions. Item 14, conditional use permit 1717 SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber is the agent to allow for vacation home rental on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1717 with 16 conditions. Item 15, conditional use permit 1718 SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber is the agent to allow for vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1718 with 15 conditions. We're in a homestretch, we've got three more. Item 16, conditional use permit 1719 SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber is the agent to allow for a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1719 with 15 conditions. Item 17, ordinance amendment 1603, staff recommends to deny without prejudice for 1603. Item seven, item 18, layout plat 1708 for Dean and Patricia Farr to combine two lots in order to create lot 6C, block D of Idlewise Mountain Development subdivision. Staff recommends approval of layout plat 1708 with 11 conditions.
And I understand staff wants to pull item nine?
Item nine, please, yes.
Staff wishing to pull any other items?
Pulling anything else?
No, sir.
Planning Commission, anyone wishing to pull any of those items?
Seventeen, please.
Seventeen?
And just looks like, in case somebody wants to speak on 10 again, is on our paper here, just in case.
10. Any others from Planning Commission? Audience, at this point, we're pulling nine, 10, and 17. Anyone else wishing to pull any of those items for further consideration? Otherwise, they'll be acted at, with the consent calendar. Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, can we do 17 first? I assume that's probably going to be quick.
Sure. But moving 17 to the start of the regular items then. Anyway, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar, three through eight, 11 through 16, and 18.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. We've jumped to 17.
Okay. Item 17 is ordinance amendment 1603, which is a sign and billboard ordinance. It's been continued several times because of court cases from around the country that keeps changing the interpretation of the Supreme Court case Reed versus Gilbert, but I'm not sure what the Commissioner's question was.
My general question is, is there a timeframe on when we're going to have that research done? Do we know what needs to be done and?
We thought it was done. We actually had a draft getting ready for review of State's Attorney's Office, but there's court cases that they're constantly finding. I was just in, at a Planner's Conference, and there was new court cases that challenged the Reed versus Gilbert decision of the Supreme Court, which then changes how we have to write our, the ordinance. So this'll give us one year to come back.
Okay. So the plan is to understand how these cases are going to resolve themselves and then come back and have the ordinance revised in one year?
Hopefully less than a year, yes.
Okay.
Mr., any other questions?
Nope.
Any other Planning Commissioners have any questions?
The recommendation is to deny without prejudice to allow staff to perform additional research.
Entertain a motion for staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, pick your, take your choice on that, Jerry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
That'll take us to item nine.
Almost couldn't get out of my chair. Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item nine is conditional use permit 1710 to allow vacation home rental on the subject property in a suburban residential district. This is for Maurice and Sonia Crowley. The agent here is Vaco Vacation Rentals. This one was continued from the May 8th Planning Commission meeting in order for staff to perform additional research to clarify whether or not this had been rented last summer and if they were in violation of the zoning ordinance. So staff did do some additional research into this. We did locate the property on vrbo.com and homeway.com with some reviews from last summer. So based on that information, it did appear that they had rented it last summer. I did have a conversation with the agent after this staff report writing, and he admitted that yes, they did rent it last summer, so the penalty fee will come into play. As of today, they have not paid it, but they told me on the phone last week when I talked to them that they will be paying it. And I know that there are some neighbors here that still would like to speak on this item.
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
Can you tell us what the penalty fee is again? I think we talked about that last time.
It'll be an $800 penalty fee. It'll be, the penalty fee is double the application fee plus a $500 penalty fee, so it'll be $800 total.
Thank you.
And staff is recommending continue to a June 12 meeting and asks to give them the opportunity to pay the penalties?
To pay the penalty fee, yes.
Before taking any action.
Right, correct. But there are some neighbors here that would like to speak.
Start off with any questions for Cassie from the Planning Commission? If not, audience, is there anyone that wishes to speak on this matter? And again, the staff's recommendation is this will be continued to the June 12 meeting. So, but you're, welcome to speak, so.
So if it's continued until the June 12 meeting, you speak again on June 12? I mean, are we, am I taking up time that I'm going to be taking up your time again on June 12 with the same conversation?
Yeah, if it's, it's being continued really, that we can listen, but I mean, the, basically, the decision should be made by written comments that were received or verbal comments that are presented at the June 12 meeting.
At the June 12 meeting? So I would just be taking up time?
Well, we're always willing to listen, but I mean, like, yes, really, the, you know, the decision should be made by comments that were made when it's formally presented at the June 12 meeting, because the staff's recommendation is to continue at this point.
So I will be back on June 12 then? All right.
And like I said, we, we always get, for the packet, people's comments, you know, written comments get into the agenda too.
Okay, so I can just submit these to Cassie like I did the pictures then?
Yes.
Awesome, I'll do that. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
What?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, Laurie.
I mean, the staff recommendation is to continue, but we haven't actually decided if it's going to be continued or, I mean, I, that's why I wonder if you want the neighbors to speak this time.
Well, but I don't know that, well, help from staff here, but I guess with the agenda being published and to continue, I don't know that we can take action.
Well, but the thing is, the staff recommendation is to continue, but there's an alternate, there's an option. If the Commission chooses to approve it, then you have 14 conditions, so don't we have two options here to decide?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's.
So we're just treating it like a regular presentation on the regular agenda item right now?
So that's why I wonder if you want them to present now. I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Just a question, if you could. When you, when you put continued, then a lot of people don't show up thinking June 12, so to just take action today and not continue it when it's been published that way, what you're doing is, a lot of people might have not showed up, like we just told the lady that just came that she can speak on the 12th. So most people, when they think it's continued, aren't going to be here today because it says continued, so.
And that was my, I guess my concern is that, maybe, I don't, maybe officially we could, but I mean, I don't know if we should.
Right.
Because the packets are published on the website.
But the pack, in the packet, it gives you the option of approving a conditional use permit with 14 conditions.
Lori, Lori is right, guys, but, but you'd want, to me, it wouldn't be right as Commissioners, even as myself, if something's continued and, and then just pass it and then tell them, well, we passed it last week, even though it said continued. So we're, I think we're understanding what you're saying, Lori, but I think, you know, you can vote on it, but most people would continue it for that reason, because the public wouldn't be here today because they think it was on the continued list.
And do we have the applicant and the agent here today?
Mr. Commissioner? I agree with Commissioner Hattcock that it is most important that we accommodate the public.
Right. And, Mr.?
Part of that, maybe, a lot of them showed up today, so listening to them today, so. Do we have the agent and applicant here today?
No, I don't see them.
I don't believe so.
And I don't believe that's really fair either, to take action when they were expecting it to be continued.
Chair, just in case, these, some of the people might not be able to show up at the next meeting if they needed to speak, because they, they can't come to the next meeting, that would be different, so we could hear them today, so we could put that with us.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's true. I mean, you can speak today and it is part of the tape-recorded record, so.
Right.
And, Mr. Chair, just to point out something, it did say in here on the update, the Commission meeting, unless the penalty fees are paid prior to, they're not paid prior to today, so that didn't trigger that aspect of it.
All right.
Anyway, bottom line, if you're wishing to speak today, we'll, you know, we'll take notes, it'll be part of the recorded record, so.
Thank you very much. My name's Nancy White, and I live at 13670 Red Fox Court. I'm in, within the 500-foot requirement by statute for the county to be notified. And I did not make it to the May 8 meeting because of health issues, so I wish to speak today because I have no idea if I'll be well enough to speak on June 12. So my issue is this, they're in violation of the covenants, specifically number 15, for commercial business, and running a vacation rental property is definitely a commercial business. And what will it do to my house, which I intend to sell next year because of health reasons? I have to notify any potential buyer, buyer, that, number one, we violated the covenant, so the covenants basically are thrown out the window. And two, we've got a commercial business running within a very nice subdivision, which 99.9% of us who bought property out there, bought houses out there, wish to live in the wilderness in peace and quiet. And by running a vacation rental property, we have no idea who's going to be there from day to day, week to week, or month to month. And I received no notice of last year that they were in violation of the covenant or was running a commercial business. And people who live in that subdivision, despite the statutory requirement, need to know that this is going on, number one. And recently, a family bought a house, just to show how some neighbors were over a tiny little fence that was built in the back of their house because they had two little children and the mother was pregnant with the third. And they bought the house, put up a tiny little fence, just to kind of keep the little kids contained and make it safe. And all the neighbors in the surrounding area got ticked off over this tiny little fence that was put up. And they were forced to take it down and moved out immediately. So, and I've had issues over a tiny little dog kennel that I've had when that fence went up, that's attached to my house. I had people telling me I was in violation of the covenants because I had just a tiny little 10-foot kennel attached to my house when I had my golden retriever. So the problem we have is, I live in Copper Oaks too, there is absolutely nobody to go to when there is a violation that goes on with the covenants. And trust me, I've had a neighbor in back of me that was absolutely horrendous to live with, and you couldn't do anything about it. So I'm asking you, who are in charge of running these statutes and approving who can do what, where, and when, to please deny this commercial permit. It's not the appropriate place to have a vacation rental property. And I beg you, please, otherwise, who's going to pay for the decrease in the value of my property? When I have to notify new potential buyer, buyers, that we've got no idea who's going to be living there, when, and where, and how long, and who these people are? And I'm sure Crowley's are not running background checks on every individual person who they rent to, so I beg you, please.
A couple of things I'd like to point out, and I'll ask Michelle to come forward, that, and this is brought up at the previous meeting and almost on every vacation home rental, but covenants are not enforcement, they aren't statutory, they're agreement between the homeowners and enforceable by the homeowners' association, not by the county. Now, this ordinance does say we may consider, but with very clear stipulations, and I guess, Michelle, if you could step forward and kind of just reiterate that for the audience, so.
Michelle Hoffman, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. You are correct, covenants are a private agreement amongst the homeowners. Often, there may be a homeowners' association that's involved in enforcing those covenants. However, again, our statutes only allow the Planning Commission to enforce a covenant which specifically excludes a vacation home rental. And the reason for that is that covenants, you know, have multiple provisions, they may have definitions unique to the terms used within those covenants. And to put the Commission in a place of interpreting those covenants and interpreting the intent of the individuals who entered that agreement would essentially put you in the position of the courts. And I think the city doesn't consider covenants, the county doesn't consider covenants, except in this instance, just for that reason. They're private agreements, and certainly the homeowners, if they feel the operation of a vacation, of this particular vacation home rental violates the specific provisions of their agreement, they are free to enforce that agreement in, in the civil courts.
Mr. Chair?
Travis.
Michelle, if you don't mind, I got a question, though. Where is the county going to be liable, or this Commission or anything liable, if we say we approve this? And according to the covenants, it says a business for profit's not allowed. And so if something goes on, if there's a lawsuit or something of that nature, are we going to be considered culpable in any manner? And the reason why I say this, because if it says business for profit's not allowed and we say yes, the covenants say no, well, they bring a lawsuit, and the property owner says, well, they said we can do this, so we're listening to the government rather than listening to the, the private.
Liability stems from under, generally under a contractual theory, where the parties have a contract, or negligence, where, for instance, I have the duty to operate my motor vehicle in a safe manner so that it doesn't harm someone else. The county is here to simply enforce their ordinances, period. So I always hesitate to say someone's not going to file a lawsuit, but in terms of this Commission's responsibility, it's simply to fairly, without bias, enforce these particular ordinances. These private individuals in this, in this area entered a homeowners' association, I mean, entered this covenant, that's an agreement between them, that is not an agreement with the county. That is simply an agreement between these individuals living in that, and I believe it's Copper Oaks, in that particular subdivision, that they've agreed, these are the rules that the neighbors are going to abide by, in terms of whether it's the color of their house, whether it's the color of their siding, the county doesn't get involved in that. If they, and again, you said for profit, well, what does that mean? You're going to have to, is sit down, if you're going to put yourself in that position, you're going to have to sit down and read that entire agreement, you're going to have to try and define those agreements, you're going to also have to attempt to determine what the parties intended in, in the use of the particular language. That's the role for the courts, not the Planning Commission. And unfortunately, a lot of these covenants were written before the vacation home rental trend began. But county has no role in enforcing those covenants. That's a private agreement between those neighbors. Does that answer your question?
And they do, they do have the option of, at their annual meeting, or they, in theory, should have annual meeting, I'm not sure how homeowners' associations do, but they have the option of amending their covenants to add the specific language required by the ordinance.
They could, and that would only apply moving forward, it wouldn't be retroactive. But again, that's why it's very specific, it's, that's really a role of the courts to determine what a covenant means, and any one of these neighbors could file a civil complaint tomorrow to enforce those covenants if they believe that the operation of these vacation home rentals violate the covenants. It's just not the role of, of this Commission.
I guess that's where my point is, if, if an individual filed a civil lawsuit and then they said, well, the county gave them permission to do this, but even though it violates our covenants, we're still not?
That's a civil, that's, that's, we, we're not a party to that agreement.
Okay.
That's, that's a private agreement between the neighbors.
Mr. Chairman?
Laurie.
I think the audience should, should know that, in my opinion, the crux of the matter is that vacation home rentals have been declared for the purposes of our ordinance not to be a business. And that decision was made by looking at, I guess, cases across the nation, court cases and decisions and whatnot. This has never been tested in South Dakota, so our courts have not decided on this issue. But because it has, the Commissioners have accepted the idea that this is not a business, that's, that's why these vacation home rentals are accepted from the part of the ordinances that says you can't have a business in a private residential community. Did I state that succinctly enough?
My understanding is maybe because it's residential use, and whether it's rented or not, it's still residential use, they aren't, they aren't selling widgets.
That's, that's an opinion that I don't agree with.
No.
So, and I guess many others don't also, but the fact is, it hasn't been tested in South Dakota courts.
I have a question. Cassie, was, just, I know you have to stand up, I'm sorry.
I'm asking a lot.
Ms. Cassie, was Vaco the ones with the, that had it in the summer on this property, or was it somebody else?
It was Vaco under a different name.
Oh, wow.
Mr. Chair, because I recall when we asked the agent at the prior meeting, we said, when did you start managing this property? He said, the first of the year, January 1st of 2017.
Yes, and he, he's a new person.
Yes, he's a new agent.
Yep, yep, he's a new person. The way I understood it from talking with the other agent, his name is Colin, he, last summer, they operated a company called Thrive Property Management. And he, the way that he explained it to me is that this was one of the first vacation home rentals that they started doing. Thrive Property Management was more of a long-term property management company. This was one of the first people that approached them and asked them about renting short-term. At that time, they weren't aware and didn't research county regulations in terms of getting a conditional use permit. So they still have Thrive Property Management, which is their long-term side of their company, and Vaco is now the short-term side of their company. So the way he explained it to me is- So, the way he explained it to me is, they then separated the two entities and hired Carson, who was the one who was here speaking last time. So, he had no knowledge that they had this property last summer.
Because, I don't know if you noticed, they share an office on Rushmore Road.
Yes, yes, they do. 'Cause they're one in the same, it's just two sides.
They just have different business focuses?
Yes, yep, two sides of a company.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie. I guess that makes the difference for me, because they did know how to do vacation home rentals. And they ran it anyway, and then in January, just switched the company name, didn't have one from conditional use permit, and they're property managers. And they didn't know about conditional use permits for vacation home rentals.
They did get conditional use permits for other properties last summer, under the Thrive Property Management. This was just their first one. And in a conversation with the agent, he had told me, I mean, he admitted that they did not do what they were supposed to. He in no way tried to deny that they had rented this last summer. This was just the first step that they had taken into short-term rentals, nightly, weekly rentals. So, they just did not do the research that they should have done to figure out that there was county regulations and permits that they needed.
So, Thrive has properties-
Yes.
-that they rent, but they have never rented, except for last summer, this vacation home rental. Other than that, they've never done vacation home rentals in the county, except for last summer, this was the first one?
This was the first one that they did short-term, that they did not know that they needed a-
Meaning as a vacation home rental?
Yes, that they did not know that they needed a conditional use permit for. All of their other ones, from my understanding, with my conversation with the agent last week, was that they were all long-term rentals, which we don't require any sort of special permit for in the county.
Okay.
I guess that's, I think it brings up an excellent point. When we first started talking about vacation home rentals, one of the things that we wanted to evaluate is, you know, through the, basically, review or when the property changed hands, is how did the handling agents handle things? And I mean, I think we're kinda getting indication, how do you be in the real estate business for rentals and not be aware that this ordinance has been highly controversial and in the paper for several years now? So, to me, that seems a little ingenuous.
Mr. Chair, I guess in defense of the agent, though, there are surrounding counties that have no ordinance, ordinances that, you know, regulate vacation home rentals. So, I mean, you know, we tend to give the public a break when they come to us, and I think, you know, you can't expect, maybe those people just moved here and started this business, involved in long and short-term rentals. They may not know the history. They may not, they may be very young in their career, and I think this is a perfect example of where we tend to give the agents a break.
Wait till you get up to the mic, and you didn't state your, you didn't state your name the last time either.
I apologize.
Well, and maybe, I don't know if there's any questions for Nancy White? Didn't get a chance to go to questions to you. Have any commissioners had questions for Nancy? Sorry, I just wanted to kinda close that out. So, I mean, I guess no questions for you.
Well, let me add one more thing.
Well, you had your opportunity, we went to questions.
But you brought up one thing that I'd like to comment on.
Well, you have your opportunity. I'll go for second speakers. Let's give everyone a chance to speak once first.
I have something to ask Nancy, so she can stand. So, Ms. Nancy, so you said that, that everybody noticed that there was fences being put up, dog houses, different things that covenants were being violated. Did anybody notice last summer that somebody was renting a house as a vacation home rental?
I do not. I've had serious health issues.
Right.
And so, I didn't know. And they live kitty-corner from me, and I barely see their house, the backside of their house from the backside of my house. And I have an acre and a half, and I just try to get the damn thing mowed, and weed whacked, and the dandelions taken care of without noticing what's going kitty-corner.
So, everybody else noticed your doghouse or that lady's fence, but didn't notice a vacation home rental or one of the houses were being rented as part-time?
The house that had a fence put up was like the third house down Wilderness Canyon Road going into the subdivision, and it was the neighbors around that house that complained and got together and forced them through, I believe, legal action to get that fence removed. And they had just moved in, and then I think they re, they got out of there within enough time to, you know.
But you see what I'm saying? If people can notice a fence and a doghouse that's in violation, but a lot of them didn't come to the county, or maybe, maybe some of them don't know the rules, I'm totally know that.
Well, Silver Fox Spur is down this, I live on the corner, Wilderness Canyon Road and Red Fox Court.
Okay.
So, you can see my house. So, if I violate the covenants, which in back of my house, when I had my golden retriever stuck out maybe eight feet, 'cause it was attached to my house between my garage and my kitchen.
Right.
So, it was in there. And so, when everybody was complaining about the fence, one of the people complaining about the fence said, "Well, actually, you're in violation because you got a dog kennel." And I said-
Right.
Dogs are not supposed to run loose in the neighborhood, so I just let my golden retriever out to pee and poop and do her thing, and that's it.
Okay, Ms. Nancy.
It's a tiny, non-inspicuous kennel.
Okay.
You know, if we're supposed to not violate the covenants by letting our dogs run loose...
So, Ms. Nancy, tell, tell me what you missed just a minute ago.
Well, I used to practice law in California before I got sick. So, let me tell you, if you throw this back onto the landowners and the neighbors to file a lawsuit, trust me, I know how much litigation costs. And that's just extremely expensive. And I am going on, living seventeen years in this subdivision, and Crowley's were there before I was. And I'm sixty-one, with very little gray hair, may I add? But they've been there, you know, way before I was, and they're probably middle-aged. I don't know exactly how old they are, but they are probably around my age, so, you know? And if I was supposed to do something like that, I would read the ordinance for the county and be aware of what was going on.
Thank you, Ms.
So, I don't want all of us neighbors to be caught up in a lawsuit, because number one, I'm on disability and cannot afford to pay lawyers.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy, for that.
Thank you.
What do you, sorry. Hey, yeah, I could get your name for the record, we did it the first time.
Chris Lampert, 13652 Silver Fox Spur. Okay, this is, this is in regards to Ms. Nancy's comments. Okay, Crowley's moved in at about seventeen years ago. We've been there for a little over eighteen, and Crowley's moved in about a year, maybe a year and a half after we did. So, she is correct. Also, in regards to her statement, Silver Fox, you have to actually come down Silver Fox on, I am horrible with directions. North side? Yeah. North side of Silver Fox.
We have to go west.
Right, but on the north side of Silver Fox is Copper Oaks One, which I'm a part of. On the south side of Silver Fox is Copper Oaks Two, which is where Crowley's lived. There's one house between our house and Crowley's house. Can I point on this?
Um...
No? Anywhere?
Staff, is there a way to point on the...
That's okay, I'm gonna include maps for the next meeting, anyway. We'll have this all under control. But we did notice, and we thought, originally, we thought that Maury and Sonia just were having company right and left, you know? And we're good neighbors, we're not gonna say, "Hey, quit having company." They just were having a lot of company, a lot from Minnesota. And the reason why we found out that they were having a vacation rental was because my husband went and gave Maury a bad time, that they had a big party and didn't invite us. You know? And he says, "I had a party, there was a party at my house, I'm renting my house out." That's how we, as neighbors, two doors away, found out that they were renting the home. Also, in regards to the permit and the fact that they started going after the permit in January. We have our annual homeowners' association meeting in December, and I brought this up at our homeowners' meeting in December, and the first thing we did was to find out whether they did or did not have a permit at that time, and they did not have a permit. So, that would be my guess as to why they made choice, or made a change in January, because we brought it up at the homeowners' meeting in December, and we were starting to research it back in December. But that's all I have for today.
Questions for Chris.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Chris, whenever y'all brought it up to the HOA, why was there no action taken, or was there action taken at that time?
Um, they, well, the action was is to start researching it, and that's currently where we're at. And if Vern, our president, was here, I'd let, you know, let him speak to that. But take my word for it, I'm definitely gonna bring it up again at our December meeting. And the Copper Oaks Two and the Copper Oaks One covenants are different. However, in the Copper Oaks Two covenants, it does state that enforcement rights, because Copper Oaks One and Two both have an interest in the development of both subdivisions, Copper Oaks One and Copper Oaks Two shall have the right to enforce the covenants of the other. So, even though we are not Copper Oaks Two, and I know, I understand, this is all civil, I get that, but it, that is another reason why I'm bringing this up. We do have the ability to go to Maury and Sonia's Copper Oaks One and say, "You're in violation of your covenants."
Other questions for Chris? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
Can I ask a question? I guess I didn't understand, is Copper Oaks One north and Copper Oaks Two, or, I heard two different things.
Yeah, if you could come up to the podium.
So, the current property is in Copper Oaks Two?
The Crowley property is in Copper Oaks Two.
Two. And then Copper Oaks One is north of that?
Copper Oaks One is just on the other side of the street. Streets-
To the north?
Right.
Okay.
Silver Fox runs almost due west.
'Cause I thought that's what I heard you say, but then, then you switched the numbers around, making it sound like the other...
I apologize.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
The directions, I admit that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, staff's recommendation is to continue this to the June 12th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that conditional use permit CU-17-10 be continued to the June 12th meeting.
Second.
Motion's second. Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Continued to June 12th. Item 10.
Item 10 is another conditional use permit for a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. The applicants here are Gerard and Michelle Milnor. The agent is Vaco Vacation Rentals. Again, this one was continued from last time, from last planning commission meeting as well, as there was concerns with some discrepancies that were listed on the agent's website regarding this vacation home rental. As of last week, I was on their website, and it looked like those had been corrected. So, I'm not sure if there's more questions on this one, or...
Is this similar, was this rented out last year, and was that investigated too? Just since it's, I think, aren't both of them being operated by Vaco?
Was it fined?
No, it wasn't fined. I, I, that wasn't part of the discussion last time, that this one was operated last year, so I didn't look into that, I didn't look into this one to see if it was.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I believe this house was just completed last year.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that. It looks like the house was just completed in November, December of 2016. I believe the issue on this one was that the number of guests advertised on the website exceeded what was listed on the DNR approval for the septic system.
Questions for Cassie from Planning Commission? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on item 10? Please step forward and state your name.
I'm Jerry Austin. I live across the street from this residence. It was built, according to the contractor, strictly for a rental. I'd have to agree with the other lady. We don't know who's coming, who's going, how long they're there, what they're doing. This house they built, there's five neighbors in a circle, just like a wagon wheel. This house is right in the middle. And we don't feel that it should be a business, which you say is not a business, but if you stay in a motel for one night, one week, or a month, it's called a business. To me, it's a business, they're making money. But anyway, the point is, you have a lot of traffic coming and going. There again, how many people can you get in, and how loud is the party? You know, people come out here on vacation, they're having a good time, but all the neighbors have to put up with all the noise while the person that owns the building is gone. I just don't know how come we don't have vacation rental business located in an area where there is more vacation rental business, instead of scattering them all over residential housing? We bought property in a country drive, twenty-five miles to get in here, because we wanna be out in the peace and quiet, not listening to the party next door. And I wish you'd give some thought to that. It's just, I just don't feel right that it should be in a residential area. I have nothing against vacation rentals, but I think there's a place where they should be, not in the middle of a hub of residents, single families.
And through the process of vacation home rentals, the first time it went through in this recent rewrite, that's been a big point of discussion, and, you know, both the county board and Planning Commission always haven't been unanimous on that, so...
But we're getting them scattered all over in a residential area. You know, I mean, this house, talked to the contractor last year, they didn't rent it out because it wasn't done. When he was building it, we talked to him, and that's what it was being built for. It didn't even have a permit for a vacation rental. And it's right, like I say, if you look at that house, it sits right here, and there's five neighbors, go around it like this, they're looking for peace and quiet in a residence. That's why they drive twenty-five miles to the country, not to listen to this house that advertised how many people they get, how big the party can be.
PGA, I guess I have a question for you, you kinda related to that. I assume when somebody comes in for a building permit, there's really not a question on the form or the process to determine whether it's a big family or they're intending to do a vacation home rental?
No.
No?
No.
That's, I kinda suspected that, just wanted to confirm that.
But they advertise how big the party, you know, party can be, and all these other five residents are driving it twenty-five miles to the country for peace and quiet. The people that are advertising that rental wanna get as many people as they can, and the party begins, and they live someplace else, well, we, we put up with it. You know, if they were, the vacation rental businesses were located in a certain area, we'll let them all, you know, do their thing and whatever. And like the lady said, you don't know who's there, when they're there, nothing about them, because it's changing all the time. Makes it pretty uncomfortable for the residents that live there.
Appreciate your comments. Questions for Jerry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Staff has recommended for approval of the conditional use permit CU-1711 with fourteen conditions. And one of the conditions that was continued from last time was to make sure that what was advertised on the website met be in our regulations and what was in the proposed stipulation.
Thank you, Sig. I have something.
Deb.
Couple of things is, this company is, to me, there's just some red flags that are coming up about this company that I'm, I'm not liking much. They had Thrive, then they went to Vaco. Their website isn't right. They didn't follow the DNR regulations on it, which is huge for eight people instead of twelve. They can't have up to sixteen people in this vacation home rental, it says on page five of six of this review, that's sixteen people that can be in the house, but only eight can stay overnight. I don't, I don't know. If you're running a company and you're gonna open a new one or put it into something else, even if you're new, you still have the experience of what you were doing from before. And, and I do agree with Ms. Lori about, you know, Pennington County's the only one in the state that has regulations on vacation home rental. But if I own a company that does any kind of rental, which I do, I'm gonna know the rules and regulations beforehand, I'm also gonna put it on my website correctly. I'm also going to put it on my website correctly. So those two things are, draw a red flag to me. Are they really going to be responsible to the neighbors around them for us to put a vacation home rental around other people to make sure they follow the rules and regs of vacation home rental? So, those are my thoughts.
I have a question for staff. I don't know, PJ or Cassie, whoever is appropriate. PJ, so Cassie doesn't have to get up.
Oh.
Remind me, did we clarify when DNR says eight, is that eight adults or is it, and children aren't counted? Or when eight is eight, is eight regardless of age?
Eight is eight. According to Scott Hippel from DNR, they also flush the toilet and their sheets need washing too. So, eight is eight. Regardless of how old they are.
That's what I thought, but I mean, that question came up last time. And that was my understanding from previous applications.
Yep, we did confirm that.
Unless they're wearing diapers. Disposables.
He didn't even mention if they're wearing diapers. He just said eight is eight if they have to flush and their sheets need to be washed too.
Mr. Chair, then our ordinance needs to be changed. Because it states that children don't count.
Well...
It does.
State rules would circumvent what ours would say, I would think.
Yep, the more stringent applies.
Yeah, but our rules should reflect the state.
Well, I agree that that needs to be corrected. But I mean, just, I'm just saying, I think applying it right now, you wouldn't allow the children if DNR is saying eight.
And also, the people already in business need to be informed of that.
No.
Because they've been functioning on our ordinance.
Wasn't there some, something in the website that kind of indicated that they weren't considering children under eight? Or was that just part of the discussion? I don't recall.
No, that's in the ordinance.
That was part of our discussion last week.
Because, last time.
Well, I wasn't here last time. I don't know.
It seemed like it was part of our discussion.
Yeah, it was part of the discussion.
I knew it was part of the discussion, but I didn't know this got triggered by being on the website, but...
No, it got triggered by a different vacation home rental, the one that we brought back up for reconsideration. He had specifically asked because of what it says in our ordinance.
So when they filed for these vacation home rentals, did they file through the state? And did they get fined through the state because they didn't have them registered? Meaning, did you guys check through the state when they had the last number nine in this one, that they had filed through the state for vacation home rental? They just didn't file through us, or they filed neither?
The licenses are part of the staff report. Whether the state fines them or not, we don't know.
But they didn't have licenses either for...
They had state ones.
They have state applications, yes.
They had state applications, but not county applications for vacation home rentals?
Well, part of the requirement for county is to apply or have your license for the state and provide proof of that. So these two submitted proof of their application to the state. Whether or not they had it before, I don't know.
See, that's what I'm saying. So if you do a state application, it seems like you would know that, or they, someone would tell you in the state at least something, that in Pennington County, you're going to have to have another license?
No.
No?
No, I wouldn't.
They don't. No, they don't do that.
Well, and I've always found that somewhat problematic because somebody, and you know, I haven't, especially in suburban residential, I haven't been a supporter of that. But I mean, like, for someone to go through all the paperwork of getting licensed in the state, and then all of a sudden, you come to the county and we say no, I find that somewhat problematic. I don't know how you do it, you know, kind of chicken or the egg. You know, should it be, you get less from the county first before you go through the effort of, I think there's more paperwork. It looks like getting the state approval and the tax license and everything else.
And the inspection and...
And I guess that was my point. Did they file through the state? Or are they just now filing these through the state? And maybe they didn't file the straight, the state or us? And they are a company that was Thrive before this, and they did rentals?
They did long-term rentals, though.
Yes.
Which are different than, the long-term rentals aren't regulated by the county or the state because anyone can rent their home out to anyone long-term without getting those entities involved.
I appreciate that, but I have a rental business. And if I'm renting, whether it had been short-term, long-term, I think I would have known that. My husband does enough research on stuff when he does his rentals or you do a business to know a vacation home rental or not. And I'm going to agree with Sig, this has been like an issue for over a year or two in the county, and nobody ever told anybody about it? Nobody in the rental business, in the county or the state, ever told anybody about this that were in this company? No one ever heard of this?
And I believe this...
And you do this for a business?
If they're doing it as a business, I believe they're also required to get a realtor's license to handle rental properties. And so, I mean, there's...
So they do know? Because as realtors, they all, they're the ones that call me about vacation home rentals and how the rules are and stuff all the time. And what I think about, you know, their vacation home rentals or what I do. Do you see where I'm going? So, I don't know. That's why I said that, to me, it's drawing some red flags to me. And I want to make sure this company is going to be able to, even with me, check and see if my rentals are nice and what's going to move next to you. You don't always have a choice in one sense, but some of these are things that people are going to be renting out every, what, month? Every six weeks? And they got to be able to take care of that rental so the neighbors also can have their enjoyment of their property. So there's two sets to property rights, guys. Anyway.
Other comments? I don't believe we have a motion on the floor at this time. Jerry, if you want, we should come back up to the podium.
Just like to make a short comment. I wonder how many people would like to have a residence and then have a residence moving, a business next door to you that's allowed 16 people during the day to come there and party or do whatever they want. They don't stay a month. They stay three or four days, probably, maybe a long time is a week. And you get another group of people and they're allowed up to 16 people. It sure makes a real residence that you've enjoyed for years kind of miserable. Well, a landowner someplace, living someplace else is making money while you put up with the noise.
Well, just one comment that, as we're going through the ordinance on vacation home rentals, you know, that gets brought up quite a bit. You know, you get also brought up, you have good renters too. And you could have a bad neighbor that owns the house and is having parties all the time. And at least on a short-term rental, you're getting rid of them in a couple of days, so...
Not very often they have 16 coming and going.
No, I understand.
And I agree, Sig, but I also believe that, I've approved most vacation home rentals, and most people know that because I know it's a business. But when I have a red flag from a company that's not following the rules already, and then they want to put other people next to their business, in their business, whether people call it or not, then I start questioning if I'm going to agree with that. That's, I'm into vacation home rentals, don't get me wrong. But I want to make sure the business that's running those vacation home rentals are going to enforce the state rules and the state things that they are saying they're going to. And so far, this company hasn't shown me from many of the signs that they're going to. So I'm, I want to protect the neighbors as well from a company that needs to follow through. So...
We're 25 miles out in the country. So I don't know who's going to monitor what's going on and put up with anything that's going on other than the neighbors. But I just want to make a statement, Deb. We did call it a business. You did. See, it is a business. These people are making money.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Burm?
Yeah, Sig, I have to comment on what you said. These are being rented dozens of times during the season. There's a constant turnover, and we know that's true. And we also know that the ordinance often isn't followed because we cannot get enforcement officers out if there's three dozen people on the property. So it's a problem.
Again, we do not have a motion on the floor. The staff's recommendation is for 14 approval with 14 conditions.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit.
I'll second.
CU 1711 with 14 conditions.
Yeah, motion second. Further discussion?
You know, I listened to Deb talk, and I've got the same concerns as well. And while I think the property owner themselves maybe deserves the, because it's something that's authorized in the ordinances for them to be able to do this, but with this current company, I don't know if I can support that. I don't know if that company is looking out the same thing that we have to, which is the health, safety, and welfare of the local residents. So to me personally on this one, I think if it was a different company, I probably would say yes. But because of this and the issues that we've seen just recently, I'm going to vote no, most likely on this one.
Well, I was going to vote for it because I couldn't find a reason not to in view of the ordinance, but I think I will support my colleague in vote against it because there's just something wrong here.
Any further comments?
I guess one of my, maybe I have a question and a comment. It looks to me like they have applied for all of the paperwork and they've done everything that they're supposed to do in order to follow the county ordinances on this. And it sounds like the same company has some slips on other businesses, and they need to pay the fines accordingly for those. But as I understand it, the vacation home rental is defined by kind of like a two-week number. So if they, if this company or this, these people, for example, wanted to rent this house out on a monthly basis instead of, you know, a weekend basis or something like that, we wouldn't even be here discussing this, right? They would not be required to apply for this. So, I mean, can, they could force this situation and say, "Well, if you want to rent it, you have to rent it for, you know, three weeks." And if they do that, then we're not even here discussing this? Is that, is that correct?
I don't know. I mean, like, anyone in South Dakota can rent their place for two weeks out of a year. Rally rule or whatever you want to call it, but I mean, it applies to the entire state. And if a house is rented for a year or a month, I agree that it's not here, but I don't know, you know, somebody could take a vacation for two weeks. I think that's still a vacation home rental. I don't know. PJ, is, in your view, is there, at what point is it becoming a semi-long-term rental versus...
Nightly, weekly rentals over 14 days in a calendar year. That sums it up. This was vetted out during the two years of the Vacation Home Rental Committee. I know Commissioner Landers sat on that. They didn't want to touch that part of the definition. They didn't want to go into monthly and yearly rentals, long terms, basically.
And Mr. Chair, I guess I'd like to make a comment. I do realize that VACO is a new company. I sympathize with the agent. Carson's about the age of my son. And I watch my son and his friends. They're very ambitious. They want to do something. They may not always understand the rules. And I would be, I would tend to, as Rich pointed out, they're being regulated by the state, they're being inspected by the state. I would give this company a break. Give them a chance to earn our trust.
I guess, you know, I'll have a comment, I guess. I mean, if you're a licensed realtor, just like being a licensed engineer, you're expected to know the rules. And I mean, in any case, whether on a traffic violation, you know, ignorance is not an excuse of breaking law.
Agreed.
So I mean, I think that plays into it, but I don't know that they've been a, you know, maybe if it's the same company, they've been somewhat of a bad actor as far as just saying that they didn't know. But, you know, I do think that one of the things that we looked at when we did the vacation home rentals is the management of it. And so when we did a review, we look at the management style. I kind of agree with you on the point that they haven't been given a chance to show their management style.
Yeah, they don't really have a history.
So...
I mean, they've made a few mistakes.
And I guess the other part is, you know, I've been one of the more vocal ones on, you know, no one in suburban residential, that's, you know, did go through anyway if it's at least acre, you know, this is a three-acre lot. You know, there is some separation. And, you know, I guess the county has chosen that, you know, when we get the larger lots, that's an acceptable use. I don't know that I'm totally on board with that, but that's what has been passed through the ordinances, so... Anyway, any other comments?
It's all good.
The motion is, motion second is for approval with the 14 conditions listed by the staff. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
No.
Roll call, Jerry?
Rich?
Aye.
People over here. Deb?
No.
Lori?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
No.
Bill?
Bill.
Aye.
And Barbara?
No.
For three? Motion is passed. And I guess for the audience, just a reminder that they would come up for a review in one year per condition 14, but it also can be brought forward anytime on a complaint basis for review and removal of the permitted violations that are being found. With that, takes us to item 19.
Item 19 is layout plat 1709, which is to reconfigure lot lines in order to create lots 2R and 3R of Harrington subdivision. The applicant is Bradley and Gloria Groth. The surveyor is Howland Surveying. I'm not sure if any of them are in the audience today, sorry. The size of the subject property is 9.48 acres. So the applicant is, basically owns these two properties. They're subdivided basically right down the Middle East to West. What they're looking to do is actually move the interior lot line to go down the middle of the road. The existing lot size of today, Lot 2 is 4.48 acres, low-density residential and vacant of any structures. Lot 3 is five acres, low-density residential has a bunch of structures on it. The proposed lots, Lot 2R, which is going to be the one on the west side, separated by the blue line down the middle of the road, is going to be five, is proposed to be 5.147 acres, low-density residential, and has the same structures as Lot 3, not vacant of any structures, as the staff report indicates. Lot 3R would be 4.305 acres, low-density residential and is currently vacant of any structures. This was routed through the interdepartmental review and no items of concern for a layout plat came back. The applicant's request at this time does appear to be in harmony with Penning County's current and future land use. For the proposed lots, the applicant's request to move the interior lot line does not affect density in the subdivision. And for purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision for general scope and conditions. And therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat 1709 with nine conditions.
Questions for PJ?
Mr. Chair.
Rich.
How far is the lot line moving?
So if you look at what's on the screen right now, if you look at the one to your right, the lot lines currently are the ones in red. That red center line is going to move to the blue line, basically bisect the road down the middle. So maybe that'll help. Basically, it's splitting it in half roughly, north to south versus east to west. Yep, correct. Yep.
All right.
Other questions for PJ? Anyone from the audience have any comments on item 19? Staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat PL 17-09 with nine conditions. Entertaining a motion to have effect?
Still moved?
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Any none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item 20.
All right. So item 20 is another layout plat, plat 1710. This is to create lots 3A and 3B of Mett subdivision. The applicant is Tracy Spawns, and the surveyor is Howland Surveying. So what they are proposing to do here is to subdivide this property into two lots for the purpose of creating a second residential lot that can be developed separately. As this property exists today, it's Zone Limited Agriculture District. Its 16.25 acres access is off of Mett's Road via an existing 16-foot wide access easement. And this lot currently contains two residences. One is a primary residence and one is a caretaker's residence. They do have an approved conditional use permit from 2000 for this caretaker's residence. The last review of that was in February of this year, and it was approved with six conditions. So what they are proposing is Lot 3A of Mett's addition would be 2.772 acres. It would be Zone Limited Agriculture District. However, due to the minimum lot size requirement, that lot would require either a lot size variance or a rezone. required on that one, and it's currently vacant of any structures. I do want to point out that there is floodplain on this property, so any development would have to be done outside of the boundaries of the floodplain, or they would have to get the approved floodplain development permits for that area. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Just a few notes came back that need to be corrected on the plat prior to it being filed with the Register of Deeds, but overall, there was no outlying concerns with this. So, what they, they are proposing to construct a new single-family residence on proposed Lot 3B, which would have a well that's shared with Lot 3A, and it would have its own onsite wastewater treatment system. And if this plat is approved, then they could apply for a minor plat, which would have to be approved by this body and the Board of Commissioners prior to filing this with the Register of Deeds. So, per the purposes of a layout plat, staff did not find any issues with this request, so we are recommending approval of layout plat 1710 with 15 conditions.
I had a question as far, is there a detailed flood study, or is this just approximate boundary, or is there an actual floodway defined?
This is just the approximate boundary based on Rapid Map. I don't believe that there has actually been a flood study done on this property.
Okay.
One would be required until they wanted to actually build something in a floodway. Oh, okay. They're whispering at me that it's a Zone A.
So, the hatched area is the flood?
Yes, the blue hatched area is the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain.
Has the applicant indicated whether they're going to go for a variance or rezone on the smaller parcel?
I have not heard yet. They have not indicated that to me yet.
You said where the access is going to be to the Lot 3B. Where is that again?
It is down here. There's an existing road that accesses this lot right here. That's an access easement, so that's what they would use.
I see. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions for Cassie? Any comments from the audience? Item 20. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the layout plat PL 1710 with 15 conditions.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item 21.
Item 21 is another layout plat 1711 to create lots A, B, and C of Track 5 of Clear Creek Tracks. The surveyor is Howe Land Surveying, and the Haskell's are the applicants. I'm not sure if they're in the audience today. The subject property is 8.16 acres. What the applicant is looking to do is to subdivide the tract into three different lots, Lot A, Lot B, and this is the original proposed layout subdivision. As you see, the bottom right tract or lot is listed as Lot B, but it is corrected by hand in your packets. That's supposed to be Lot C. Tract B, as it exists today, is limited agriculture. Its future land use is planned unit development sensitive. It has an existing underground, single-family residence built back in 2000, detached garages, attached garages, existing well, and existing septic system onsite, and access is from an existing 66-foot-wide public access easement, and it is part of Clear Creek Number Two Road District. The proposed lots, Lot A, B, and C, are all going to be currently, well, if it gets subdivided, Zone Limited Agriculture, bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you. Limited agriculture has a minimum lot size of 10 acres. All the proposed lots are going to be between 2.5 and 3.071 acres, so lot size variances or rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments would be required prior to a plat being recorded with the Register of Deeds. Bless you.
Sorry.
This was routed through the interdepartmental review. The only items of note that came back were from the Register of Deeds noting that Lot B needed to be actually Lot C in the next round when it comes to the minor plats. Clear Creek Tracks subdivision, that is in your notes, that the majority of the lots within that subdivision are Zone General, are Zone Limited Agriculture, and the smallest lot is 2.38 acres. There are three lots, Zone Suburban Residential, within that subdivision, with the smallest there being 2.28 acres, so the applicant's request does appear in harmony with what that subdivision does have currently. For the purposes of layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request, as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision, and therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat 1711 with 12 conditions.
I have a question as far as, and maybe this is more of a general question, but, you know, the other lots that are referenced in the adjoining areas, I assume are probably grandfathered in lot-size-wise?
When they went through it ten, years ago? Yeah. It's very possible.
Well, and I guess my question is, and maybe, this is kind of general, because I know we've done other situations, but why would a lot size variance be granted? What hardship is there in rezoning? And I mean, there should be a proven hardship before variance is granted. So, I mean, why not rezone it rather than ask, allow, even allow a variance?
The rezone would be the preferable thing to do, because I would agree with you, a lot size variance would be difficult. The applicant does have those options. There are applicants that go forward with variances, and we tell them they don't have a hardship, but they want to do it anyway.
Right. Other questions for PJ? Comments from the audience? Item 21. Staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat 17-11 with 12 conditions. Entertained a motion to that effect?
A move for approval of layout plat PL 1711 with 12 conditions.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
Just one thing.
Yep.
That's a cool house in the picture. It's built into the hill.
I concur.
That is pretty cool, and very clean and nice, and wow, just nice property.
And I thought it was going up for sale soon if it wasn't.
Thanks, PJ. Sorry.
Any further comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item 22.
Thank you.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item 22 is a request to allow a mobile large animal home veterinary practice in a general agriculture district. The applicants are in the audience today. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit to allow mobile large animal home veterinary practice that will include medical, supply storage, general animal care, and surgery. According to the applicant, the practice will be predominantly mobile at 90% and some in-home at about 10%. As the property exists today, it's Zone General Agriculture District. It consists of 40 acres. The access is off of Justice Lane, which is a 66-foot-wide private access easement. There is a single-family residence, a large pole barn, and a couple of sheds on the property. This was routed through the interdepartmental review, and no significant items of concern came back. Just some history on this property. Staff was contacted by the seller's agent inquiring about what permits were required for this. I did meet with Michelle at the State's Attorney's Office to look at what types of permits would be required, whether a home occupation was appropriate, and it is in her determination that this was not a home occupation, as it was not conducted entirely in the home. However, it was determined that Section 204-F of our zoning ordinance, which pertains to conditional uses, states that other uses may be allowed which are not listed, provided that they are not contrary to the intent of the district in which they are located. And this is located in a general agriculture district, and staff did take consideration that a large animal veterinary practice would be in harmony with other permitted uses in a general agriculture district. So, the considerations for a conditional use permit, the five considerations, there wasn't any items that came up during that. So, staff is recommending approval of a conditional use permit, 1720, with 11 conditions.
Thank you. Stig, just one thing. They also had a public meeting, which I appreciate anybody that's going to do home occupations have a public meeting with people. I only know this from Mr. DeSanto, so I appreciated that they did a public meeting just to see what the neighbors thought as well, so thank you for doing that, the lady that was conducting this business. And it sounds like it was very favorable, and it did last a while, so.
Mr. Chair, I did have a conversation with the applicant a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to make sure that was known by everybody. I have no objections.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Travis, same as me. I've also talked to the applicant or representative for it.
I think you probably talked to all of us.
Not me.
I probably missed the phone call.
Yeah. Missed me. I haven't talked to the lady, just the realtor, and asked what the, what the area's supposed to be like, how conditional use permits work, and that kind of thing, so I haven't talked to the applicant, though.
Other questions for Brittany or comments?
I'll just add to the group disclosure that the realtor did give me a call as well and asked if you should, if it's required to show up and discuss things at the meetings, and I indicated that, that, you know, if you want your, you know, case heard, that you should show up to the subject meeting where the, it's being discussed and decided on, so.
Just telling them the process.
Summary of the conversation.
When I was contacted, also before it got on the agenda, probably a month, month and a half ago, so, but this was coming, so.
Okay, then I may have, that may have been a phone call, too. It was a while ago, though. It wasn't right away, it was a while ago. Okay.
Well, I appreciate that, just because they went to the public, they wanted to know the process, and, you know, that's not a bad thing. And people contact me all the time as well, too, just, you know, don't vote, they don't say, "Vote my way." Well, they probably want to say that, but just, what's the process and what do we need to do through that process in order to move forward? Because I do work with the staff a lot, but they also like to know kind of what we think on the process and how that gets done, so we appreciate that.
I agree. I think it just makes the process go better for...
All of us.
All the way around.
Yeah.
Comments from the audience for item 22?
Good morning. My name is Ron Hedenskog. I live in the area up there. Dr. Masters is my veterinarian for my large animals. I appreciate you considering this and favor of it. I like the fact that I have a large animal vet in close proximity to me. The area around there still remains largely agricultural, and there are a lot of still cattle ranchers still out there in the area. Having access to a large animal veterinarian in that closeness helps animal husbandry, helps prevent the spread of diseases, and is definitely a beneficial consideration, I think, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, did you say your name? I didn't catch it.
Ron Hedenskog, and that's spelled H-E-D-E-N-S-K-O-G.
Thank you. Questions for Ron? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Tiffany Smart, and I also just wanted to say thank you for considering this. Speaking on behalf of Melissa Masters and the Veterinary Clinic, I am a horse trainer myself, and she has helped several of my clients equine-related, and I have a, we, I actually work out of a boarding facility, and so I understand the need for, as Ron also mentioned, the risk of spreading disease, and I think that having a veterinarian in this area that does large animal is very, much so, an asset to the community for several reasons. One of the things that I have noticed is a lot of the veterinarians that we do have already in Rapid City are getting out of the large animal. Two of our best large animal veterinarians are all the way over in Sturgis, and for that reason, we have a problem with having to drive a long ways away in the case of an emergency, and having her so much closer has definitely been a benefit to me as a personal experience. I recently purchased last summer a very expensive show horse from Kentucky, and I had no idea who Melissa was at the time. I had called five different veterinarians in the area, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say their names without them being here. I don't know how this procedure works, but they were all local, three of them, excuse me, were local in Rapid City here, and the two that I called that I normally use that are in Sturgis, one is a very reputable equine surgical center, and I was going to have to drive all the way at 1:00 in the morning, and I could not get an answer other than from the receptionist. And finally, the lady that I board my horses out of in Black Hawk gave me a card that she happened to have from Melissa. I called her, and she answered late at night, and she was the only person, veterinarian, that I could actually get a hold of that would assist me over the phone and give me the procedures that I could do to help to fully make it so my horse could be in the morning, and she offered to drive all the way out to our barn at 2:00 in the morning by the time we figured that this might be a very severe colic case, and she said, "If you need to do surgery, I am, you know, regretful to inform you that you may have to drive all the way to Sturgis, but I will help you in the best way that I can." And so, after that, the next morning, she called me and asked how my horse was doing. And in all of the years that I have been training horses and showing horses all over the United States, actually, I have never had a vet return and call me to check up on one of their equine patients. It's usually quite the other way around, is, "This is how my horse is doing? Are we still in the red zone?" And so, speaking on behalf of her character, that spoke volumes to me, and since then I passed out her business card, and out of some of my clients, she has helped eight of my 30 clients, and luckily, just the other ones hadn't had any problems recently. And out of those eight clients, nine horses that I know have, that she has traveled to our barn, so I do believe that when she says 90% of it will be mobile, she is one that travels, and we don't have any traveling vets in the area. A lot of times, people have a hard time with work and different things that they have to do, and they can't run and hook up their trailer. Speaking from coming, working out of a boarding facility, a lot of clients board their horses and can't run their horses to the vet. And so, there is a huge need, I believe, for having a veterinarian that will go to you, and I can't imagine that doing 10% of her work out of the house is any more traffic or any more than the well-known reigning trainer, actually, that I know lives on Longview Road, down the road, and, you know, taking in horses for training and lessons and clients out there his way. So, after that episode that I had with my personal horse, two weeks later, I showed him at the fairgrounds for an AQHA horse show, and I had still never met Melissa face-to-face yet, and I walked out of the arena towards the barns, and she was walking up in the parking lot, because I had told her, you know, I'm planning on showing this horse, and once we found out he was out of the clear and everything was okay, she actually walked up, and I must have had one of my logo shirts on, and she said, "Hi, you must be Tiffany." And I said, "Yes, you must be Melissa." And she said, "I just checked on your horse, Big Ben." And I said, "Really?" And she said, "Yes, he was in the horse stall, and I saw your name, and I saw his name, and I recognized him from our phone conversation. I checked all of his vitals, his TPRs, and he's actually looking very good." And I said, and that knocked me off my feet, I have to tell you. I've never had a vet that was walking around the facility, checking in on the horses in the stalls in the show barn at the competition, you know, "Look at my horse," without me having to go and drag them away from what they were doing and bring them, "Can you look at my horse?" So, I think her character is very caring. Her bedside manner with her clients and patients are very knowledgeable. She explains things, and she's been a joy to work with for me. She's very professional. Her experience also, as well as the large animal and cattle, my husband has a bucking bull business out of Red Lodge, Montana, and we would love to bring our bucking stock over here. And the one thing that he has had a problem with is wondering who can come out and help him with the embryo transplants and, you know, the artificial insemination and different things that go on with the livestock, and so, knowing that she would be in this area would be very beneficial to us as well in that retrospect, so that if he does decide that he can sell his ranch and come this way, that we could bring the rest of our livestock over and finally not live in two separate states. So, I do believe that there's a big benefit to having her in the area, just because we have a lot of small animal veterinarians, but we don't have a lot of large animal veterinarians, so.
Question for Tiffany. Thank you.
Nice.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Tom Barrett.
Are you guys together?
No.
Three separate neighbors.
And I ran right south of that property.
Hold on. Are you together or not?
Well, we're all neighbors.
No, but I mean, are you speaking separately, or?
Yes.
Okay, one person had...
we have a lot of small animal veterinarians, but we don't have a lot of large animal veterinarians.
Question for Tiffany. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Tom Barrett.
Are you guys together?
No.
Three separate neighbors.
And I rent right south of that property.
Hold on. Are you together or not?
Well, we're all neighbors.
No, but I mean, are you speaking separately or, okay, one person had the podium at a time. Sorry.
Again, my name's Tom Barrett and I do rent right south of that property, approximately about a half a mile. And we have, have used Dr. Masters and we're quite pleased with her. And I think, you know, we are, like the lady said before us, you know, having a problem with finding large animal vets, you know. So I'm extremely in favor of this, of you guys approving this. As far as the traffic, you know, our traffic, you know, I'm on 154th, you know, you know, I can't see where the traffic would be a great big difference, you know, than what we already have because of all the development that's going on up north of us, you know. And, but I'm extremely pleased with her. I believe she'll do what she says she's going to do. I think you can put your trust in her. So.
Questions for Tom. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Lindeman and my property boards the back property line between her property and my property. And when I originally received a letter about her wanting to use land as a business, I had concerns. The realtor called me, we addressed the concerns. And at the public meeting, she answered my questions. And the only thing I can say is that I think having her in our area would be a great help. And also, I think she'd be a great neighbor. Thank you.
Questions for Patricia? Thank you.
My name is Georgia Dale. My property is bordering the north boundary of the one that Melissa's purchasing. And yes, we had some concerns at the beginning, but throughout a couple of meetings with April 17th and previous meeting with all the landowners, I just feel that Melissa has gone above and beyond to keep us informed. And you just don't find that with people moving in to an area. So I appreciate that. And I'm a, I've got a ranching background and I run cattle on our, our property. So I do encourage or enjoy the fact that I've got a large animal vet next to me and there are services that she provides that you just can't really find from anybody. So we do welcome her and thank you.
Questions for Georgia? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Or is applicant here and wishing to speak?
Who's the famous vet? That's the question. Hi.
Hi, my name is Melissa Masters. I graduated from Mississippi State in 2013. I've been here for a little over a year now trying to establish my business. And so far, it's been going pretty well. We looked a long time to find a property and this one's very well-suited for, I think, what I need to do. It's a lot of storage stuff, a few surgeries. And if colic horses need IV fluids or something like that, it's pretty much the only use of the property. Otherwise, I'm always out and about.
Questions for Melissa or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Rich.
How many animals would you expect to have on the site at any given time?
Probably not many. I mean, there's usually only one colic horse that needs fluids at the same time, hopefully. I mean, spay a couple pigs or a ranch dog here and there, not a whole lot.
As your business grows, do you see that number increasing?
I mean, it's mostly a mobile business. I mean, that's what it's set up for. That's what I enjoy. So I mean, it's really just if something needs surgery or something needs hospitalized or like footwork in a tip chute or something like that.
Okay.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Larry.
Are you going to live on the property?
Do it.
Are you going to live on the property? Okay. Because I noticed there's a residence there.
Yep. I need a place to live.
You don't live in your mobile hospital?
No van living?
Tiny house.
Sounds like you're going to be in your van living for a long time if that's how your business is going and listening to people. It sounds like you're going to be pretty busy.
I hope so.
Nice.
Other questions for Melissa?
Thank you.
Recommendations for approval with 11 conditions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit with 17-20 with how many conditions?
Eleven.
Eleven conditions.
Second.
And I'd also like to comment that I can't think of a more appropriate use of this property. It's got the right zoning, it's the right size, and the neighbors are happy.
Nice.
Motion second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. And this is maybe for PJ. The, on page two of her April 18th letter, she lists in there that the conditional, if the conditional use permit is granted, that she'd like it stipulated that it would, if it would go to anybody but her mom or dad, that the permit be rescinded. And help me out, when a property sells, the conditional use does not go with that, correct?
It does unless there's a condition that says otherwise. Conditional use permits go with the property.
So we don't have that, we don't have her request included in the conditions. Is that correct?
I did not put that as a condition as far as if it sells, that the conditional use permit end. Did you want to add that as a condition?
No, it's her request. I guess I would leave that up to the landowner, but, or the requestor. I guess I would ask that, if it's okay to bring her back up and ask that question. I want to make sure that we're, she's getting what she's requesting.
In the last meeting with the neighbors, they had made that request that if the property was to be sold to someone other than directly related to me, that it'd be rescinded. So I just put that in there at the neighbor's request.
Okay. So right now, it's not listed in one of the recommendations. And I guess, can we do that?
Yeah.
Yes. And, and as the person making the motion, I would be open to that.
Yeah, motion or second, we would have to approve amendment to it, or you could do a substitute motion.
So if you want to propose an amendment, I will accept that.
I would like to make sure that her request is being, included in the recommendation. So that would be my, that would be my.
Number 12.
Number 12.
I would agree to that as well.
One of the conditions.
So number 12 would, would read that if the property is sold to anybody other than the mother or the father of Melissa Masters, that the conditional use permit be rescinded.
We'd like to use the word "end" instead of "rescinded." That's consistent with what we.
End?
End. It's what we normally use.
I agree with, I'm agreeable to that.
Not terminate? Use "end" instead of terminate?
We've been using "end" on all.
Terminate sounds better.
We can change it.
You're terminated.
But Rich, your proposed amendment, how terminology you want?
End.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And motion and second or?
Agreed.
Agreed?
Agreed.
So we have approved through staff's recommendation with 12 conditions, 12 one that we're just discussing as far as when we end with, no longer basically in the family. Jerry, have that pretty clearly? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item 23. We still have a fairly good audience. I appreciate your patience for waiting around to item 23. So.
Item 23 is a major plan unit development amendment to amend an existing plan unit development to allow for additional storage units, to allow a single-family residence to be used as a caretaker residence, and to allow future commercial uses. The applicant would like to split this property, actually, there are three lots currently, but they actually would like to split that in three different PUD zones that would allow different uses in those zones. Zone, Zone 1 would consist of a future commercial use that's located along Sheridan Lake Road. Zone 2 would consist of the existing storage units and a caretaker's facility. And Zone 3 would remain a buffer between the storage units and current residential zoning. The zoning history, there is quite a history on this property. Back in 1977, this property was originally approved for a mobile home park, but it was never constructed or developed. In 1977, again, this property was part of another PUD that it was actually removed from. You can see the minutes here. I don't want to read them verbatim. And then in 1987, they did remove this. And they actually put two conditional use permits in a PUD instead of actually putting conditions on the PUD. So this PUD amendment would kind of clean up some of that issue. And they also designated this area for commercial use or neighborhood commercial. And they consider those mini mobile storage the neighborhood commercial. And along that frontage of Sheridan Lake Road, that was originally approved for a gas station. And currently, there is a gas station that's across the street. So that's why he is requesting a different use to be allowed on that property. That since there is one across the street, they probably wouldn't construct that on that property. So there's a considerable number of permits on this property. There is a single-family residence on the lot to the west. The lot to the south, there is no structures. It's just vacant of any use. And on the property to the east, there are 17 mobile storage units that are currently in use there.
You say mobile?
Not mobile. Oh, sorry, not mobile. Yes, sorry.
Looked pretty fixed to me.
My stuff's there and it's not moving.
It's not. No. This was routed through the departmental review. There was some concern from our county highway department with some of the drainage. And that was addressed as a condition of approval. There was some concern about the approaches. That is also a condition of approval. They are planning on.
Could you, yeah, could you clarify what the approaches are going to be in?
Yes. Currently, there's an approach for the single-family residents that's on Sheridan Lake Road, actually. Right there. And they are planning on removing that and moving it over to the Murfield right here, Drive. So they would actually take an approach off of Sheridan Lake Road. There is an existing approach there that they will keep on Sheridan Lake Road right here for, oh, sorry, it's kind of over a little more. Anyway, so they will do that for access to that Zone 1. And then they have access to the storage units off of Dunsmore Road currently. The city did have some concerns with some of the, some non-access easements and locations of the approaches. The applicants have met with the city and they have, they resubmitted a new site plan. That was part of the reason it was continued from last meeting. So the proposed uses on the PUD lots in Zone 1, which is the one to the south that's along Sheridan Lake Road, it's 4.9 acres. And they would like any future development in Zone 1 be consistent with those uses allowed in a general commercial district. And a car wash facility, because car wash facility is not a permitted use in commercial right now. So they would like to allow that. In plan unit Zone 2, they would like to maintain the storage units. They would like to add two additional storage units to the west and the caretaker's unit for the storage units. And then Zone 3 would be a buffer for residential, future residential use. And that's 13.39 acres. So currently, there are 17 storage units on that property. Originally, in the original conditional use permit, it was approved for 660 feet by 480 feet. It was in the corner. It was some odd measurement. And there's actually storage units outside of that boundary right now. So this would bring some of that into compliance. So staff is recommending approval of this plan unit development with 22 conditions.
Well, I had a question because I, I'm still confused. I guess you were saying that, that one driveway is to remain. And if you look at their updated site plan, that note had got removed that said this driveway to remain. I know that platting from the city would require them to take access from the lesser order street, not off the arterial Sheridan Lake Road.
Which access are, I'm talking, you're abandoning that access, correct?
There's not a sec, there's not one indicated on the updated site plan.
The updated site plan doesn't show.
Unless it's this. Unless it's this and we just can't read it. Is that the existing, the new approach?
The new approach? The new approach is over here off Murfield.
No, no, no. I mean, the existing one.
There's one there, isn't there?
Well, there's, there's a manhole turnout. I mean, for the city to clean out the sewer. But that's just the manhole turnout. That's not a driveway.
Yeah. Where, where is the city limits on this property?
We'll get to you in a second. Let's.
Down the center of Sheridan Lake.
Maybe the applicant can answer the question. But I mean, like, on the original site plan, there's a specific notes as existing driveway to remain. And then on the updated site plan, that note has been removed.
That's, I'm understanding that this.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Sorry, Kyle.
Kyle Tralor with KTM Design Solutions.
That's my understanding that that was the existing, that's.
In discussing the locations of these accesses with both the city and the county departments, and without having an actual use to find out, you know, we don't have a, a car wash plan, or we don't have, you know, any, any real solid plans or a site plan to go in here. What we ended up doing is, is adding a note to the upper right-hand side of this. It just, just basically reaffirms that at the time, a building permit or, or any development plan comes forward, that the access locations will be worked with the appropriate authority. So we're not proposing any new access locations and we're not requesting to maintain any except for the one on the caretaker's home that's going to be relocated with, with the construction of the new storage units essentially.
Sorry, my old eyes can't read that small print.
No kidding.
It says future driver locations to be determined by use through future development plans and in accordance with the appropriate road authority.
Yeah. And that is a condition.
Like I said, I know the city a lot of times will push very hard not to have the access from the lower order street, depending on how it's split. Now, if it's split into three lots on that frontage, the only option would be to take access from Sheridan Lake Road. So.
And that would require both of those to be readdressed because the access is actually off of Dunsmore and then the house will be off of Murfield. So that will.
Well, we have Kyle up there. Any questions for Kyle?
One. Is the city annexed all the way around you? Where's?
City is annexed at least, yes, all the way around.
Yeah, it's the hatched area. So it's everywhere except for to the east.
And you don't want to annex into the city?
Uh, not at this time.
But you're, you're aware, and that's in the report too, any platting you're.
We've had several conversations with, with city staff and with county staff. And with, with this proposal, we're not asking to plat or replat. We're just simply cleaning up the existing plan development that's on this property. And there's lots of written legals and, you know, so many feet to here and so many feet to here. And so we're just kind of cleaning all of that up to allow for the construction of two more storage unit facilities. And then just kind of preparing this for, for something into the future.
I guess that's, that's my concern is preparing for the future. Are they going to have to follow county commercial rules or city commercial rules for the future on that property? Can Ms. Brittany?
Sure, if I could answer that. On that frontage on Sheridan Lake Road, right now, it would be our commercial uses. So whatever is listed in our permitted uses under our commercial zoning district, that's what would be allowed just on that southern portion, the one that is along Sheridan Lake Road. To the north, that portion that's the buffer, the way that I have the condition written is it would be those permitted uses under suburban residential.
County.
County. So if they wanted to do anything more with that, if they platted it, then it would go into the city and it would be under whatever zoning districts that they'd.
Yeah. From being in the city and then developing something that's going to go this way towards the city instead of outward towards the city, it seems like you'd follow more of the rules of the city for the future instead of the county. Meaning if everything around it is built with curb gutter, sidewalk, drainage and approaches from city, and then this one has a county commercial development and PUD on it, just from being to the city, how much more does that, it's going to cost you more money, I know that. But how much more issues is it going to cause for people that are annexed into the city and that are around you in that area? I guess, one across from you is, is annexed in. I guess, one across from you is, is annexed in, everything around you is annexed in, but you guys want to do county right in the middle of all that. That concerns me a bit of, of future development and future land use in that area. What's my concern?
Everything, that, everything is in the city from Murfield...
North.
...to the east, except that piece.
All the hatched area.
Everything north of that piece is in the city.
North, west.
The only, that piece is surrounded by city. The city actually goes down Sheridan Lake Road where the sewer line goes.
Yep.
So they can't do anything in there without the city.
Connecting to the sewer, water, all that kind of stuff?
It's already there, yeah.
In your, on your property?
And, and we are located within the three-mile jurisdictional zone, too, so anything that, that we do propose will, will run through the city as well.
So you have sewer and water on that property? Or do you have septic?
Septic.
And how far is the water and sewer from that property?
Sharing the road. On the south side, and the east side, and the west side.
And I thought if you were three hundred feet within a sewer and water line in the city, you had to connect.
You do if they want you to. That's the way the administrative rule is written. There's like three conditions, you have to be, you know, within four hundred feet, and, and the actual utility would request it.
Has to request it, yeah.
It creates more county islands in the middle of city, city buildings. Does that make sense? And to me, we're trying to close up the donut holes and not keep letting people put county jurisdictions in the middle of city annexed areas.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So what's the zoning for Zone, for Zone Two?
It's all PUD right now. The, the way that it stands right now, all three of these lots are zone PUD with two conditional use permits.
Okay.
So there wasn't any conditions on this PUD. This, this was zone PUD to be part of the original development to the north and to the west. And then in eighty-seven, they requested it to be removed so they could do neighborhood commercial for the...
Neighborhood commercial is two.
Pardon?
Neighborhood commercial is the storage units.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that's what they had designated them in as, and then they did the conditional use permits for those.
The city did?
We did.
County did.
The county did.
What's the city say is going to be around it? What's the city zoning map saying?
Um, the city zoning, it's actually up here. It's that low-density residential District One, that's that yellow, that's Red Rocks and Countryside. And then the brown is the golf course, which is general agriculture.
The city's, can I, I'm not going to speak for the city, but just in knowing the, the maps and how they lay through here, the city's future land use plan, which is what we'd have to follow if we were to annex into this, has a general commercial located along Dunsmore and Sheridan Lake, and then residential on the west side of the property.
Right, which I'm not, I'm not offended by that, by, because highway service, commercial, you're right on our arterial, sir, you already know, you're going to put, and then you're going to put medium density or some type of buffer, which you have. My concern is, when people are talking about their drainage or anything coming, and then yours is not built up to standards and everybody else is, and you're using, what, for drainage down Sheridan Lake, like, I'm sorry, I didn't go out and see your property. Is it paved? Does it have the proper drainage? Is it city drainage? Is it county drainage on your property?
Uh, the, the drainage that, that runs through the property right now, so you do have kind of a mix and a match here, where everything's been essentially built to city codes up to this point, because of where it is located and how it has to be reviewed. We have Dunsmore Road, which has a storm sewer system located within it, and that is discharging into some of the local drainages that you have running through here.
It's causing issues. I actually went out to Leo Hamm's property a couple of years ago. So why I'm saying that is, again, you have city property next to county property, and what's happening is that drainage, because you have curb gutter and sidewalk in one area, that they have nowhere for that drainage to go to what his or everybody else's on the other side, because there's, there's no culverts. So it consistently causes a few issues when you have two different things and you create county. I don't know what we can do about it, because I don't want to stop your development in a sense, sir, but I also, for the future of Rapid City and the county, donut holes are not the best way to create issues.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Laura, yeah.
Brittany, can you just clarify, the property to the east and to the south is, is not annexed by the city, correct?
It's county, yeah.
Nor is Countryside, or is Countryside part of the city now?
It is part of the city now.
Okay, so it's just, it's just that this property abuts county property to the south and to the east?
Yes.
Except that the road splits it?
They're like whispering pines, it's still in county.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I guess I would, I would not say that this is a donut hole, this is actually a budding county property. I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Actually, it's all the way around it, if you look at the hatched area from...
No, but this is county, and this is county.
Highway service so far, but nothing's built there. And then this is city, this is city, Countryside is city, these are all city.
But there is stuff built here. There's stuff built here. And this is a pasture, and this is a pasture.
Yeah, that gas station is in, in the county.
This is county, county, it's all county on the...
Final question, I guess, what Deb brought up. I guess, Brittany, your intent of the, basically, condition number ten, applicant ensures that all natural drainage ways must be maintained and are not blocked. I mean, is your reference only on the property? And I guess, is there, I know with the city, sometimes there's, you know, there's a future detention pond that doesn't get built, that probably should have been built, you know, on the timing wise, and I don't know, I don't know if, Kyle, that's a question for you or for the applicant, but what's the intent as far as, that's one of the concerns we got is drainage is off property that's being affected by on-property uses.
And it's across the street from your property.
Is that part of your intent, Brittany, as far as ten?
Yeah, and number nine, if you look prior to the building permits being issued for the two storage units, that a drainage plan addressing the runoff shall be reviewed and approved by the county drainage engineer. Because we do have a requirement in, under our stormwater ordinance for the, once you get over a certain percentage of impervious area, that it does have to be addressed, that water quality capture volume. So that was the intent of that condition, was to address drainage.
Chris, are you related to Leo Hamm?
Yeah.
Oh, that's Chris.
Chris, that's Chris.
He, he's opposing your...
Yeah, I went and talked to him, he handed me the letter before he handed it to you guys, and I understand it feels frustration.
If, if you could come to the podium, maybe if you're speaking, please, thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a quick recess, because I'm parked in a two-hour parking?
Oh.
I hope I'm not.
Uh, sure. I don't know if we're going to, if we could take a five-minute recess, just take a little bit right there. We usually do break for a two-hour park. If we can reconvene, I guess, Chris, you were just coming up to the podium, and Kyle.
Mr. Hamm is who?
Chris Hamm. So the question was, what?
Your, your dad opposed it.
Not my dad, my uncle, my uncle is Leo.
Okay.
Yeah, my dad's Dean. And he called me and said, you know, here's a letter I'm going to give to the commission, because he was on a fishing trip, actually, or he was going to be. And his frustration was, he's been complaining about this drainage issue for years, when, I don't know, handy, when the city, being designed, designed this, the road coming down there, and then the drainage from Red Rock Meadows or whatever, drive, goes down, runs underneath the road, and it's, you know, tearing out, he has a big old hole in the ground. Okay. He wants somebody to resolve that. He went to the city, the city said, well, that's not our issue anymore, go to the county. The county said, no, we're not, it's not our issue. So then he's going to anybody, me, Red Rock guys, trying to get somebody to fix it. Nobody just wants to deal with it. So that's his concern, that was his frustration. He said, well, I'm going to probably have to oppose any future development. He doesn't want to oppose my storage units, but he said, I just want to have a platform to talk to everybody about getting something done on his drainage issue.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
And I know you were hearing some of the side conversation between break or something like that, is that correct, that none of the storage units actually goes on, drainage goes to his property, or?
None of these new ones will go at all to his property. The ones to the west all break to the west. It goes down, well, I can't really point it out to you, but it goes to the west, and then it goes down to the north.
See if I have a picture. Kind of see the topography, yours on there.
We're going clear to the far west side with new buildings. His issue is...
There's the west side.
Right. So that, we're coming to the west, and his property is to the far east side. So the additional storage units are going to have nothing to do with his drainage issue on his side.
And he's still not getting his issue resolved.
This street that you're looking at is Murfield, and that, right there is the entryway for, for your new approach.
Caretaker residence. And you can see right directly above that, that's where the road comes in right now to, my folks live at that house. That comes in off of Sheridan Lake Road to their house. This approach here would come in, go to that, because my proposed buildings are going to be coming right down to that.
So in this development, do you have a holding pond for your water that's going to be coming off your property?
Well, to the north, and I don't know if you have a picture of it, there...
That's as far north as I have, yeah, that's the...
It actually goes farther to the north, and then there's a kind of a retention pond they built into it.
An area, yeah.
That's...
I don't think I have, no.
So...
Right there. Existing drainage.
Oh, yeah, the, the retention pond is like right there.
Existing drainage easement.
And then it goes underneath.
Drainage easement or drainage pond?
So you have a drainage...
I don't have anything...
There's such a problem, is it right here?
Right there.
Do we require people to have drainage ponds if the drainage is pretty heavy coming on their property, onto their property, or their property draining onto the roads?
Yes, and that's what condition number nine would be, that drainage plan, so they would look at all of the existing conditions and any...
And see if they needed a holding pond or anything?
Yeah, or if he needs to do anything more at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Chris? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, we still have some audience, please come forward.
Good morning, my name's Alan Dietrich. I'm a town homeowner in Red Rock. I'm here with some other town homeowners. I'm also on the Board of Directors of our Town Home Association, and I've been contacted by a lot of other town homeowners. I don't have, and, and no one that I've talked to has any problems with the additional storage units. We don't have any problems with the commercial development that he's proposing. So Zones One and Two, we have no problems with. Frankly, we, most of us bought our homes, our townhomes, mine was constructed in 2013, after those storage units were there. So, you know, we bought them knowing storage units were our neighbors. We have no problems with the additional storage units that he has that are going to be added to the west. We have no problem with the commercial development along Sheridan Lake Road, nor the relocation of the road that leads up to what he calls a caretaker property, which is his father Dean's home at this time. Our only concern is, the future concern of, of what kind of residential development is going to take place in what he calls Zone Three, which is the area reserved for future residential development. As you can see from this drawing, there are currently three townhome units along Portrush, which is that road on the north edge, that were constructed kind of the 2013, 2014 timeframe. Additional town, townhome units are not a problem for us. We live in townhomes, if they want to develop that whole area into townhomes, that would not be a problem. If the future development becomes an apartment complex, or assisted living facility, or something else of a more commercial nature, or high-density, we'd have a problem with that, and the values that we think, or the change in value we think it would bring to the townhomes that we live in Red Rock. So we're not opposed to what he's trying to do today at all. What our concern is, and I just wanted to raise it early on, we understand that as that go, is potentially developed in the future, it'll come back to you, or it'll come back to a city planning commission, and we're going to be very concerned and very involved in speaking out with respect to what's happening, going to happen to that area, what, that is called PUD Zone Three, and how that's developed. As, as you know, we're part of the city, Countryside has become part of the city, so we're all city residents around there, we have no problem with, with dealing with that, no problem with the Hamm storage facility as a neighbor, or his application here.
Brittany, I guess, maybe you could clarify, I mean, I basically have seventeen, says that allowed use in Zone Three be those allowed in suburban residential zoning districts? Do you want to specifically address how apartments are, or, or the facilities mentioned by?
Sure. Right now, apartments would be a conditional use, and suburban residential, not a permitted use. My intent with that condition would be, that would be the permitted uses so a single-family residences. So if you did any paired home, any multifamily-type homes, this PUD would have to come back to get reviewed in order for that to change, other than just a single-family residence on that.
They'll be on well and septic?
No. Well, it would, it would be up to the city, because it's in the one mile for the septic, so the city would have that say, whether they would allow a septic system to go in there, or if they would require them to connect to...
I would hope.
And they would be within four hundred feet, so the city could easily require that.
Three hundred feet.
Yes, with that one-mile jurisdiction in that area, yes.
Okay. That's, that's the only concern I had, is they're going to build something that has septic in the middle of...
I think city's three hundred feet, but I think D and R will say four hundred feet.
Those other three townhomes right there that they put on Portrush...
Yes, sir.
...hooked to the city sewer.
Thank you.
They required them to hook it.
I'm good, if you're going city, at least city water and sewer there.
Well, I saw that there is a well there, is that being used on there currently on the property?
The storage place and my dad's residence.
Not going to use much water on a storage unit.
I don't know, you, I don't believe that there's a same regulation as far as water, that city could force water situation.
We don't have any requirements for wells.
No.
The county doesn't.
I think that would make sense, it'd probably be less expensive to go to the city than drill a new well.
That's all the comments I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions for Alan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak? And again, I appreciate your guys' patience on the fairly long agenda, I didn't think we'd go this long, it surprised me last time, too, so. Anyway, staff's recommendation is for approval of the Plan Unit Development of twenty-two conditions, that entertain a motion?
I'll move for approval of Plan Unit Development PU seventeen oh three with twenty-two conditions per staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
I do have one thing, Mr. Chair. Just, just to be clear, that these PUD zones are meets and bounds description, that the lot lines are not going to change. So any setbacks and things like that, the, the lot lines that currently exist will still apply, so.
Is that a concern of yours?
No, I just wanted it to be clear for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany.
Yes.
Further comments or discussion? Are you now in all the favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Repose, same sign, motion carried. Thank you. I'll take it to item twenty-four, County Board Report.
Item twenty-four, County Board Report. I believe Commissioner Lindson had said there was an update to it, that you guys had gotten?
Well, they sent us update.
No.
Yeah.
Everything that you get, I always provide them a copy.
This is the most current? Okay.
That's, that's all I wanted to clarify with her, is that this is what gets put on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to make sure I wasn't missing something. Item twenty-four, again, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concur with the Planning Commissioner's recommendation from the May eighth, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of major Plan Unit Development Amendment seventeen oh two for Cindy Dickmeyer, Robbins Roos Cabins LLC. Basically, Cindy is in a process, well, the day before, two days before the meeting, she was in the process of selling the property to a new owner who doesn't want the property subdivided at this time. So all the work that she's done to subdivide it, to sell it, she wouldn't need. So she's asked for a continuation to June twentieth, 2017, and that's what the Board of Commissioners approved.
Oh, okay. You have to do it here, too?
I'm sorry?
You're asking to continue it here, too?
No, it's up at your level, so they don't need to, it's just a report, yeah.
Any other items?
Not on that one, no.
Items from the public? Wishing to speak?
You're the public. You wanna speak?
Hi, my name's Sherry Nutter and I'm with Land Brokers. And I represent the seller for Melissa Masters' property that she's purchasing. And I just wanna thank all of you who I did speak with for your guidance that you gave us throughout the process. I know I had conversations with several of you. And I feel really good about where that's at. I did wanna bring up one thing, and this was something that came up in the meeting that I held with the neighbors, with Mark DeSanto, who was present, who we had invited in representation of that district. I don't know that this is a, a big deal or not, but it is something that I believe he and George Farabee have spoken about possibly pursuing. If you look at the general ag district and the conditional uses that are allowable or permitted, it shows kennels and catteries. If you look at the limited ag district, it shows for conditional use permits allowed kennels, catteries, and animal hospitals. And although, you know, this one was approved as a conditional use permit that was not listed, and they can't all be listed, they felt like anything that was included in limited ag should probably be also included in general ag. And so I think they might be pursuing some kind of, I don't know if that's an amendment, PJ or Brittany, or what that is that they're going to be pursuing, but.
Ordinance amendment.
Ordinance amendment. So if it comes up full circle again, you'll know where that came from, came from us. But again, thank you guys very much for all your guidance.
I appreciate your comments. And I guess, you know, I know as part of the comp plan, there's some zoning things will be looked at. I mean, so that, I don't know if that's gonna be specifically part of it, but I mean, there's a lot of things in the zoning that may change as a result of the comp plan changes, so.
And, and what is, what does that entail?
It's underway right now, it's in process.
What is that?
Uh, PJ.
Or you can wait till the county staff report.
Okay, you wanna do that?
I'm gonna cover it there.
In a few minutes?
In about thirty seconds.
Go ahead.
Uh, items from staff.
Okay, first item, item A, two thousand seventeen National Planning Conference. I attended that conference this year. It was in New York City and they still had standing room and people in the hallways looking through the doors because of the topics they had. The sessions I attended were about signs and billboards, which is why we actually continued without prejudice because there's so much new information that's come in. Tiny homes, flood and comprehensive planning. And the Matrix Design Group was there, but they didn't present this year. But the things that they're offering to us, the things that they're doing for us is in line with what's going on around the country. So, that's what I have about the conference that I attended, it is conference season, so. Next one was the two thousand seventeen Flood Plane Conference that Brittany went to this year.
I'll just give you a brief update, it was actually in Kansas City. One interesting thing, just to note, that it was during the flooding in St. Louis. So there was a lot of people that got deployed out of the conference to go, basically, I guess, do their jobs about an hour away. The biggest thing, there was a few things that came out of that conference. One was a lot of concern about funding and how the new president is gonna fund some mitigation and rehabilitation things that pertain to floodplain. The other thing that came out of there was, there was just a lot of entities that really prohibit uses in floodways. They have zoning districts and things like that, they just are pretty restrictive in those areas. And then the other thing was a lot of building codes. Was a big thing that came up because of floodplain stuff with enforcement and ensuring that things are built to, to flood standards. That was something that was kind of, you know, across the board in a lot of areas. And then one other thing that kinda, you know, hit home with me a little bit with some of that is, you know, there's a lot of talk about if not, you know, how, or it's when. And just as a community being resilient and being prepared for when that type of disaster strikes because it's a very emotional time and, and you're in the front lines and moving quickly and things like that. And, and things that you guys will be asked to do and the board will be asked to do is issuing building permits quickly and, and doing things like that, that is just, you know, something that's important at the time. So that was a big thing that came from that, too, so.
Pretty cool. I never thought about that, but that is, that's true.
Yeah, I didn't either until they, you know, it talked about that, you know, where, you know, staff was going out and marking homes and knowing which ones were gonna need building permits and when they had contractors and making sure they were built to new standards because if they built them back to old standards and they're not to new standards and just really being, you know, quick turnaround to, to help get back on their feet, yeah, that was a big.
Of most of the ordinances that we enforce, the flood ordinance definitely hits with the health, safety, and welfare. We're not trying, we're not trying to create aggravation for people.
Yeah, drabs.
Well, I know you guys mention that a lot, so. If we can skip down, can we do the comprehensive plan real quick so that she can leave? So what's up on the screens right now is the View to Twenty Forty website that Matrix is working on. We've had those three workshops previous month, we have three more workshops coming up. I can't figure out how to get rid of this little pen symbol here. But Tuesday, June twentieth, the twenty-first, and then Thursday, the twenty-second, three different locations, all starting at six PM. This gives the public another opportunity, this will be the second series of three meetings. So this is gonna be sixth meeting out of fifteen total. So far, we've had fairly good attendance. We were actually surprised at the number of people that have attended in Hill City and in Wall. Rapid City was the least attended. But we don't know, we don't think it's for lack of effort, we've put it in the paper at least nine times. We've talked about it so many times. Hopefully the word is getting out, we do have people joining the email list on a daily basis. We do have people commenting on the website. Staff does get, two staff gets copied on people that join and some of the comments that come in. But this is a prime opportunity, if you can't make any of the meetings, to click on one of those. Again, it's view to twenty forty dot com, all one word, and it's an excellent opportunity. There are pictures here of the last three workshops, I believe they're still down there. But, so you have Hill City on the left, Wall in the middle, and then the two tables of people, and then Rapid City one.
PJ, I've been following this, do you know why there was a ten day delay in them putting up the report?
No, I don't know, other than that he was at the same conference I was, but I, other than that, I don't know. And did you, you did get the report, 'cause he was sending it out?
I did get the report, but I, I looked at it on May fifth when they said it was due, or that they're gonna have it out, and then I waited till May sixth just in case it was May fifth it was gonna be out, and then sixth it wasn't there. So then I sent in a comment asking when it was gonna be done, and then it got pushed to the seventeenth, and then I think it was finally published on the eighteenth.
Yep, I saw, and we, he gave it to us, we had it for about four days. Staff had it, and we just looked through it and just made some corrections. So this is what Commissioner Lassiter's talked about, is the community workshop number one summary report, which talks about, it was kind of basically, what is the base of where the, where Matrix is gonna work off of? What is it that the county wants? So these first few workshops are probably the most important to attend, not the ones after everything has been established to establish the base. So if you read through it, there's, geez, I can't remember how many pages it is, eleven pages. Yep, but it goes through, it tells you what is, what, what people in the county want. Each table has their different kind of mission statement, and Matrix goes and pulls out the common words that are used. So if you haven't looked at this, this is actually a very, very telling document. Then they were also given the opportunity to fill out two different types of index cards. Greens, which are opportunity cards, and pink, which are issue cards. So if a green card was done, this was an opportunity that the county had to make a change, do something positive. If it was a pink card, it was an issue, that's something that needed to be taken care of. So this eleven page document is actually very informative. So, coming up in June is the next series of meetings, so we hope more people can attend. Any questions?
Yeah, PJ, the focus of the next round of meetings is, you said the first round of meetings is to kind of establish the criteria?
Yep.
So what's the focus of the next round?
So I don't know specifically.
Okay.
But I know what he's going to do is take all of the different mission statements, if you will, from the different meetings, from the different tables, kind of consolidate them into one. He is also going to give a presentation at the Board of Commissioners meeting, kind of an update. So what, I would think the goal of the next one is going to take all those and have one consolidated mission statement to work off of, yep. And then I never know what the questions are gonna be when he goes out to the different meetings 'cause I don't wanna really influence him that way, but he kinda, the, the last meeting he had, he asked about septic. He asked about code enforcement, he asked about flood, so he must be watching, oh, I know, he watches our meetings, and I know he reads our material, so.
So then in addition to the mission statement, he usually has some topics that he focuses on for that?
Yep, he has an interactive display where people have clickers at their table, so he can do real time what people are responding. And so it could be, you know, a series of A through C, or A through D, and then he can do the percentages of how many people in the actually class, or the, the workshop answer what.
Nice.
Yeah.
Actually have an intended one, but we've met with him a couple times, so I figured, you know, it's the public's time to, to talk, not, not mine, so I just reference his stuff that at the meetings.
Just, just a comment, the people of Rapid City aren't gonna be affected by this, so it's only those around the outer edges. So it's really not that surprising that a Rapid City meeting is smaller.
They might be affected, though.
We, we were told that because it was in proximity to the jail, that, that's why people didn't show up. But I would say Rapid City people, Ra- that Rapid City people, I feel are gonna be very effective, otherwise we wouldn't have all the discussion we have in this room. Because as, the city's gonna take over those portions of the county, and that's how it's gonna affect the city.
And there's a lot of people in the city that own county, you know, rural.
County, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, but city proper downtown, probably not, but out on the outskirts, I would think so.
But, and thank you for everybody who's actually met with him so far, and those that weren't available last time, we can still get you in for a half hour, forty-five minute meeting next time, 'cause it is one-on-one. It is your, is your chance to get, get out whatever you want.
And he's very nice to visit with.
Oh, yeah.
So, and he listens, so.
Yep. Any questions?
Planner one and two?
Okay.
Did he answer your question?
Telling you to come to the meeting, so.
Yep.
Twenty second, so.
So that.
That bottom one, Thursday, June twenty second, it's gonna be Black Hill State, at the Rapid Campus over by the Watiki.
And I recommend the realtors start going to some of these meetings because, and put the word out because they are very much going to be affected, the land they're selling and some of the things that are gonna make a difference in their.
Well, and the better that comp plan is, I think the easier the transition of things go from the city to, from county to city.
And teaching people when you're selling what, you know, the differences are and stuff, so I think it's huge.
But PJ, I think what the realtor here wants to know is that as part of the comp plan, there's gonna be an ordinance review.
Right, and then, and then what other changes are happening?
And then what happens out of that review, they will make recommendations on possible changes to the existing ordinances.
So the comprehensive plan is the guiding document, and everything kind of builds off of that and grows out of that. So the ordinance amendment, floodplain amendment, the nuisance ordinance, and I think I'm missing one. Zoning ordinance is the main one, they're all going to be.
Septic?
Septic is part of the zoning one. They're all going to be looked at, Matrix is going to make recommendations for change. Staff will be the ones that actually initiates the change, but it's all.
Is Matrix a consultant?
They're consultants. It's all gonna be based on what comes out of the comprehensive plan and how that looks.
And when will those changes become effective?
The comprehensive plan, where Matrix still has at least a year, and then to get everything done just in the comprehensive plan, we're probably, I would say, maybe eighteen months from now. By the time everything is done, probably two and a half years.
Okay. And do you see segments of the county being taken over jurisdiction wise then, by the city?
I don't know about that.
I thought that's.
But I can tell you that the zoning districts, like the one you've talked about, the general ag, I mean, we're looking to add zoning districts and to make the descriptions a little more to what's actually happening out there today.
A little bit more.
Yeah.
Contemporary today.
Well, I, I think some of the discussion is recognize, you know, that how, how we're different in the county from the, you know, eastern, as you go to the, basically, you know, cities, you know, Rapid City, you know, kinda up and down the quarter, and then into the hills, but, you know, I think one of the other thing has been talked about is kinda like overlay districts for specialty situations, too, so.
Do you guys see segments of the county being changed to city jurisdiction?
There's, we've been talking about joint jurisdictional areas. I don't know if that's gonna be come out of the comp plan or not. Where, I mean, like Sioux Falls does that, is that the county and the city and the, you know, same situation we have here. And so if it's in the area in the three mile, basically, there's a joint jurisdictional meeting. I don't know if we go to that or not, I know when I talked to the.
I'm aware of the three mile radius, so we already have some type of joint jurisdiction through that.
Ye- yes, there's informal review, but there's not a formal committee that does the voting. And yes, the city has three mile plating jurisdiction, but they don't have zoning jurisdiction.
Right, they used to have septic in those back county.
They have septic in the one mile buffer.
One mile, okay, yep. So that's up in the air, well, that's good to know. I primarily focus on county, horse properties and ag land, so it's, it, it may affect those peripheral areas, is what you're thinking?
And what like Sig was saying is there might be different, what's the best way to say it? Areas of the county that have different types of restriction? I mean, even just the feedback we got, Hill City was saying they're happy with the ordinance enforcement that we have, and they would actually like some more. Rapid City was, area was kind of indifferent, where Wall was hands off. So that's things that the consultant will take into consideration. Now, whether we can actually make that happen, I don't know how that's gonna look when you're trying to treat everybody the same. That's the type of thing we gotta develop over the next fifteen months.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
No problem.
I'll try to get to the meeting and get some other realtors there.
Okay, if not, try to at least get onto the email list or drop your comments in there, 'cause they'll go straight to them.
And it's view to two forty dot com.
View to two forty dot com, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planner one and planner two, we've completed the application process and the interviews, and we've hired a new planner one and a new planner two. Our planner two will start next week. Again, that one's gonna be more GIS based, and that's the position, it's also split between the environmental division and the planning division of our, our department. But with us today is Amy, our new planner one, and I'm gonna give her the mic, Mr. Chair, if that's okay, for about thirty seconds. Okay.
I'm gonna make this brief, you guys have been here quite long enough. Thank you for that icebreaker of what this all is. My name is Amy, as has been mentioned. My background is in planning, clearly. From California, I did a couple of bachelors at UC Irvine. I have a postgraduate in sustainable development planning from a university in South Africa, working on a master's in sustainable, I'm sorry, agri- words. Sustainable development planning again, with agricultural sciences as a foundation of that. Yeah, that's pretty much me in a nutshell, does anybody have any questions?
When did you start?
Where did I start?
When did you start working here?
A, a couple hours ago.
Started today.
Yes, yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks. Anything else, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a lot different given the presentation here than interviewing here.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Right. Item D, we'll just skip down to section three twelve, signs, billboards, and other advertising structures, but just to reiterate, a lot of new information coming in because of the court cases, which is why we took the action we did on that ordinance amendment. Item F, the Planning Commission packets, so just, you guys are getting them earlier, how's it working? I, I like it. You go, okay, with the additional information as it rolls in?
For, for me, I, I almost, it's too early.
Too early, oh, write that one down, too.
When, when they came just on Friday, I thought that was, sometimes a push when we have a thick packet or something like that. But I mean, the first time we got an early packet, I, I read it, and then it's sort of like by time Saturday came around, right before the meeting, I'm like, shoot, I almost have to reread this, you know, I'm getting old, I don't remember, you know, anyway.
I think staff falls into the same thing, as it's done so far in advance, we gotta refresh ourselves.
I don't check my mail regularly, so when are you sending them out?
They usually come out the Friday.
A week, yeah.
A week before.
Well, yeah, I was getting it like Friday or Saturday, I go, shoot, is it Monday?
Because I didn't, I didn't actually pick mine up till, what's today, Monday, Saturday or Friday? So they would've been sitting there for a week?
So these were mailed out on the twelfth?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I should look at my mail more often, I guess.
Yeah, if you'd like them mailed out later, I just, we'd. Yeah, if you'd like them mailed out later, I just, we'd have to make sure.
Well, no, I just say, like, to me, if it's Tuesday or Wednesday, when they're coming Friday, you know, if we've got plans or issues or something like that, I think it makes the weekend kind of hard to squeeze that in. But, I mean, if it was like, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday, I'd be plenty happy instead of being a Friday, you know. Like, so then you almost get fooled, you know, am I forgetting that the meeting is Monday and...
I think the first time this happened, everybody was like, we have a meeting on Monday? Because they got it so...
I got a meeting Monday?
No. PJ, I kind of like it, and I know everybody's going to have different views. I like it because then I can kind of skim it the first couple of days of the week or even that weekend, figure out what I, you know, have we already addressed this before, or is this one that we're, you know, one that we've continued or whatnot? And then I can go, and it gives me time to go and do some more research and things of that nature, from my perspective, still being new. And I get that, because I'm new, I don't know everything like Sig does.
And it also gives time to visit the properties, which sometimes...
It surely does.
Yeah. Was a terrible problem with just a weekend.
Because if I've already got something scheduled Saturday and Sunday because of a fence going down, then that takes away any of my time to go and look at something or dive deeper into it. But giving me that week gives me a pretty good chance to get in there, from my perspective, but... And from, at least from my experience, I know about Brittany's, but we haven't really gotten any pushback from applicants for the extra time. They kind of make a face, but they made the face when it was a month before, so.
Anything else?
Nothing further.
Items for membership? I guess I have one item, and I noticed that in a lot of the reports, basically, like wildland fire issues were a big comment. And I guess in some ways, I appreciate the staff not pulling those into the stipulations or requirements, because I, they may be appropriate and may be the right thing to do, but they aren't in ordinance. And I guess sometimes I think we exceed our authority, I guess, of sneaking things in that really aren't, there isn't a hard requirement. Now, maybe they should be, maybe as far as the comp plan, we should have, you know, the wildland fire, and that's, it becomes a homeowner requirement. Until it's a requirement, I think it's a little stretched to push that issue, even though it's probably the right thing to do. I mean, I went to the website and going, oh, here's what I can do at my house, you know. So, I mean, I did go to the website just by reading that, but it may be inform people, but don't, I appreciate you guys not putting it in.
And...
Until it is.
For the reasons that you're stating, which is why they don't appear in the conditions. That was one of the problems we had with the previous fire, not, we didn't have a problem with him, but with the fire administrator, we didn't have, the recommendations that he was making, we didn't have it in the comp plan, we didn't have it in the ordinance to be able to enforce it. And I know that Jerome, when he's talking with the consultants, that is going to be a portion of the comp plan that he would like to have put in there. So, and what he's doing, if you notice, the fire administrator comments are much more, much longer now. He wants to let people know that there are opportunities out there to mitigate your property at little to no cost to you, which is why he gives the websites and the phone numbers and...
And the applicants all see the full report, so they see that, even though they aren't required, yeah.
And Jerome's, of course, because he's the liaison between the city and the county, so he's also, knows what the city side of things are. So, when he makes his comments, it's for everybody.
Other items for membership?
I plan to Skype the next meeting, and if I'm off an hour, it's because I forgot the time change, but I'll get with Andy so that we can set up that.
Just a reminder, I'll be gone for the next meeting.
I just have a general comment. I suspect that the suburban residential vacation home thing is going to grow in the situations that come up here. Just from time to time, I see that growing.
With that being said, Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, I want to clarify and reiterate that we do not consider covenants, because we're not the proper body to enforce these private agreements. They're private contracts, and the appropriate forum would be the courts. The courts are in a position to interpret these documents and, in fact, enforce them. And I think the only reason our ordinance reads the way it does is because there's such a sense of issue. If the ordinance expressly and specifically excludes VHRs, then the ordinance allows the board to consider the covenant. But otherwise, we don't want to put ourselves in the position of enforcing the color of the siding or the height of the fence, that type of situation.
I mean, the landlord's resolve is likely with the homeowners association itself and/or getting their own covenants modified, correct?
Well, the homeowners, if there is a homeowners association, the homeowners association could file a complaint in court or seek to enforce the covenants in court. If there's not a homeowners association, private, my understanding, and I haven't researched this recently, but the individual homeowner could seek to enforce the covenants. But again, it's a private contract between the neighbors and the county, it's not a party, and we're not the proper body to be enforcing those private contracts.
Well, I guess the comment I had as far as, I mean, like, I, and I've said that as we're going through the reviews. I mean, some places I think it's appropriate to have like zoned areas, you know. I mean, like, I don't, why, I mean, it was kind of set up almost, you know, for vacation homes. And I mean, like, to me, like, even have the cluster that Tubers doing that, that was in today's packet, maybe it's appropriate where, you know, you have people in agreement in a little cluster instead of two or three in a neighborhood, and the rest of the neighborhood is opposed to it, I don't know.
Well, and under the...
That's a future ordinance amendment.
But, I mean, I think, to argue the other side, the reason some people like the vacation homes in a suburban residential district is they don't want to, they don't want to stay in a vacation home development. They want to stay, they want to, for the period of time that they're there, they want to stay in a home, in a home setting.
And one of the criteria of a conditional use permit that is examined by the commission is the impact on the, in the enjoyment of the surrounding, to the surrounding landowners. So, you can't, you should not consider the covenant unless it specifically expressly precludes VHRs, which you're not going to see, and it may, you may start seeing more now that these entities are growing. But you can still look at how is this VHR going to impact that cul-de-sac or that area? That's a proper factor, and it's set forth in the ordinance.
But I liked, I don't know who made the comment that the good thing about a vacation home rental is you have the sixteen people coming in for a party and they're gone next week, instead of the guy who lives there year-round? You know, I mean, that's, it's a good point.
And I think...
You could have a crappy neighbor that, you know, just, yeah, just disregards everything. This way, at least it turns over.
So, anyways, I just wanted to make sure, clarify that if I wasn't clear earlier.
Anything else for membership?
I saw the advertisement, who's going off?
Me.
Is it you? Okay, I couldn't refer to your bill.
Yeah, and I am.
Okay, so, okay, okay.
I have two meetings left after today.
Because it didn't say in the advertisement how many positions were open, that's why I was wondering.
I think there was a question about whether or not you were...
No, I have, I have more time, but I, so I knew, I knew it wasn't me. I did know that.
I'm term limited off, yeah.
Okay, so it's Sig and Barb, and you guys are both, this is the end, you can't do another term, either one of you?
Not in consecutive any.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
No plans for other.
Barb says I'm done.
Nothing up. As I understand it, we're term limited off, so. Entertained motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All favors and the five of thing, aye?
Aye.